And then I'll do the rules. Okay?
Oh, no, we don't have to.
Okay, I'll just, I'll do the rules. I'm just waiting on Arlie. Actually, I can get going, Arlie, I'm just, not Arlie, Mark, I'm just gonna get going, and you can hand that to me. Good evening, can everybody hear me? Can anyone not hear me? I'm just moving my flats, that if this gets to be a long meeting, I'm gonna need to wear out of my way. Could everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I just have a few opening remarks and introductions to make, and then we'll get started with the meeting. First, with respect to introductions, to, all the way to my, that's my right, we have the Board of Selectmen, starting with Mr. Bugby. Coming in from Mr. Bugby is Mr. Garrity, followed by Mr. Leehan. Next to Mr. Leehan is Joyce Frank, the Town Council, and next to Joyce Frank is the Town Administrator, Jack Hathaway. Over to my left is the Town Clerk, Sean Dooley, and the Assistant Town Clerk, Carol Green. In front of me are the Advisory Board, and they are chaired by Pat Snead, who I'm gonna ask to introduce the remainder of the board.
At the end of the table, we have Art Konstak. Next to him is Angela Wade, Mark Waldman, Al Butters, Lisa Pearl, Rick Gilbey, our Administrator, Senator Chris Jacobson, and we have two absentee members tonight, Harvey Thurling and Kate.
Thank you, Pat. Prior to getting into the rules, and after the rules, there'll be a motion to get the meeting rolling, but prior to that, I just wanted to share with you guys a story that I've been talking about with Animal Control Officer Hillary Cohen, that some of you may have heard about, but maybe not all of you have heard about, and it's one of the cool things about living in the town of Norfolk, and I think it's a great story for us all to maybe think about living our lives that way. So, I don't know if any of you all noticed, but there was a posting on Facebook, as well as on the Sun Chronicle, somebody's phone is going off, about a small dog, a Yorkshire Terrier, that was in need of a surgery. That surgery was gonna cost $1,500, and they were asking for donations, could someone please donate some money, and they would raise the money for this dog, and then they would offer up the dog for adoption, and today, apparently, someone came in anonymously to the police station and donated $1,400 in cash, so that that dog can get a surgery tomorrow, and that's pretty amazing. So, I'd like a round of applause to whomever it is, and just for the general generous spirit.[195.23][195.23](APPLAUSE). Hillary reports that the dog is going in for surgery tomorrow, and she will then be available for adoption, and apparently, she's really good with other dogs, so, Sean, maybe ya? Okay, just some rules, I know most of you have been around the block with me a few times, but for those of you who haven't been, or who don't remember, there's a few rules that we live by at town meeting. You'll see at the front of the cafeteria, we'll call it an auditorium for today's purposes, there are three microphones. They are marked "yes," "questions," or "motions," and "no." If there is a motion before the electorate, and you want to be heard on that motion, if you are opposed to the motion, you go to the "no" microphone. If you are in favor of the motion, you go to the "yes" microphone. If you have a question, or want to make a motion within that motion, you go to the middle microphone. So, I would also ask that people line up, and the reason to line up is so that people have a sense of how many people there are who are opposed to or in favor of a motion, rather than, it keeps the speed of the meeting going along, and it also lets people who maybe will be a little reluctant to speak know that nobody else is speaking against that motion, and it's important to them, so they'll get up and speak. And what we wanna avoid is, one person gets up and speaks, goes back and sits down, and right before we're about to put it to the meeting, someone else pops up out of their seat and comes up, and we'll try to work on that. With respect to questions, those are at the center microphone. Pursuant to the bylaws, as you all know, you are allowed, per motion, two times at the microphone. The first time, you may speak for five minutes. The second time, you may speak for three minutes. I will be keeping track and timing. In addition, if you are asking a question, that counts as one of your times at the microphone, so if you have several questions, you may wanna bundle them. We'll wait till several questions have been asked, and then the folks who may be over in the non-voter section, and maybe in the voter section, can then get up, come to a microphone and answer those questions. If you have a motion, those motions need to be in writing. We have, in this handy-dandy red file folder, blank motion forms that you can fill out, I'll put it down here in front of me. So if you have a motion that you wanna make to amend, it's just to amend an article, that you can do it by filling that out and handing it back in, so that the clerk can keep a record of it. Also, with respect to when you come to a microphone, kindly identify yourself by your name, first and last, and by your street address, so that there can be a recording of who is speaking on a particular motion.
Madam Moderator, I move that Wade be reading the warrant, and then return the warrant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're off to the races. Already, I've got some housekeeping to announce as the Advisory Board member approaches the microphone. Article I is actually gonna be broken down into two motions for the purposes of voting, and Mark will explain more about that.
Mark Waldman, Advisory Board. First of all, this is the transfer article, I was told there were copies put outside, so hopefully, everybody was able to grab a copy, 'cause there is some amount of detail on this, and we will be treating this, as the moderator said, as two distinct motions with two separate votes. So, Madam Moderator, under Motion A, I move to transfer from 2108 Fire Fines Revolving Account $2,235 to 012202 Fire Department Training, and I move to transfer from account 11552 Information Technology Expenses $33,847, and that amount transferred to 011551, which is information technology salaries.
Is there a second?
Only town meeting has the authority to move monies within a budget between salaries and expenses that were approved at a prior town meeting, so, in this case, we are, although the first one isn't salaries and expenses, it is moving monies out of a fine revolving account that was designed for the purposes of Fire Department Training, so that is why we need to make that transfer. The second one is actually moving money out of one budget, where we had the money appropriated to the expense side of the account, but instead, we need the money on the salary side, because we actually do have an employee earning that, as opposed to what was originally thought that we would be paying a contracted service for those amounts.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments relative to Motion Article I, Subpart A? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approval of Article I, Subpart A, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, the majority was required to carry that. Motion B.
Okay, Motion B, and all of these monies will be coming out of the same funding source, and that is free cash. Madam Moderator, I move we transfer from free cash to account 012202 Fire Department Radio Repair, the sum of $36,566. To transfer from free cash to account 019412, interest on court judgments, $15,913. From free cash to library salaries, 016102, $10,000, and to library expenses, also $10,000. And from free cash to veteran service expense, 014532, the sum of $26,000, for a total of $98,479 from free cash. So, just as some quick background, free cash is a bit of a misnomer, it's not exactly free, it is a, in effect, it's the town's designated surplus, requires several things, first, you have to generate the surplus, then you have to have the amount certified by the state, and we have had that certification done earlier this year, and for the current fiscal year, we have approximately $1.1 million in certified free cash, which is a sum far higher than this town has seen for many years. So what we are doing here is proposing to utilize some of that money in this article, and you're also gonna hear in a subsequent couple of articles, the use of these monies. And these particular items, obviously, Fire Department radio repairs are some much-needed repair in their emergency radio equipment. The interest on the court judgment, Verizon Wireless, across the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, won a major land court case against all municipalities, and the way they were being assessed for their, I believe, overhead wires. We have set aside some money for paying that judgment, but what happens is, because they won this case going back, I believe, three or four years, the law, the state law requires that we have to pay interest to Verizon, in addition to the amount of tax they get refunded, and what's being funded here, to the $15,913, is just the interest on the judgment that they received. The library items, where we're putting $10,000 in salary and $10,000 in expense, under a state library board, all libraries, if they wish to receive state certification, are required to be open a certain number of hours every annually, and once you have this certification, you're entitled to certain grants from the state. Some of you may be aware that a couple of years ago, there was a lot of news in one of our neighboring towns, Franklin, where their library actually lost its certification because of budget cuts, they were not able to stay open, and thus had to suffer through all the problems that come with losing that certification. So, we believe with this $20,000 addition to their budget, that our library will be open the required number of hours, and we will not need to apply for the state to get a special waiver, that they do have the option to grant, but this keeps us from having to be at their mercy. And the last item is veteran service expenses, and, you know, this one is almost a direct reflection of the economy, that all communities in the Commonwealth, under state law, are obligated to provide certain veterans' benefits to certain qualified veterans. As you can imagine, as the economy gets worse and things get worse, the demand on these types of services increases, and this is what we need to get us through this year, based on the additional demand on veterans' benefits.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments relative to Article I, Subpart B? Seeing no one at a microphone, all of those in favor of Motion B, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, the majority was required. Article II.
Madam Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article II. Any unpaid bills from a prior closed fiscal period, which we are now closed, all fiscal periods, if it is to get paid, if it's discovered late and has to be paid, only town meeting can approve that payment. We have no bills from any prior fiscal period.
Any questions or comments relative to Article Number Two, the motion to indefinitely postpone? Seeing none, all of those in favor of indefinite postponement, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Article III is when particular committees come up and give presentations. We have an organizational meeting that everybody's invited to attend, that happens two weeks prior to town meeting, and folks come and say how much their committee, how much time their committee needs in order to make a presentation. Some committees decide to reserve their presentation floor when their articles, articles they're interested in are coming up, but a few committees may not have an article coming up, or wanna double the information relative to an article. The first committee that's going to speak and has three minutes is the Capitol Committee. I don't know if there's anyone here from the Capitol Committee. This meeting could go a lot more quickly.
I think they're gonna postpone until the article.
All right, well, great, so we've moved on from Capitol Committee to Urban Development. Nobody from Urban Development? Municipal Housing Trust. Well, all right, we're going on to Article Number Four. We are cruising.
Madam Moderator, I move to see if the town will transfer from free cash, the sum of $500,000, to the Stabilization Fund. The Stabilization Fund is one of the town's designated savings accounts. We are simply taking a portion of that previously described free cash, and, in effect, putting a few more restrictions on it by putting it in the savings account, so again, we had approximately $1.1 million, in a previous article, we allocated about $98,000, in this article, we're asking that we move another 500 of that over into this designated savings account, this town stabilization fund.
Now, my notes say that the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen would like three minutes to speak on this article. Are you waiving your three minutes?
Okay.
You don't have to. It is an election here, though, but...
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is what happens when you miss the organizational meeting. Our stable, you heard Mr. Waldman talk about our free cash, our stabilization fund is another savings account that we have within the town. We have not made a contribution to that stabilization fund in over ten years. We have a little under $700,000 in that account. While in many respects, it's the same as free cash, in that it's money that's available to the community for its use, when it goes into the stabilization fund, it requires a two-thirds vote from this body in order to get that money released for another purpose, which means it's more restrictive, and personally, I think that's a good thing. When you have a year, as we've had, where we've had the largest amount of surplus that any of us can remember, it becomes easy for people to wanna spend it. We don't wanna spend it. We are rated every three years by S&amp;P, that rating is critical to us, we've recently been upgraded, despite all of the recessionary considerations that we've all been dealing with, there is no such word as recessionary, besides the recession that we've all been in. We feel it's critical to put this money aside, it will enhance our rating with S&amp;P, it will certainly, we hope, sustain it, if not increase it, which will help us in all of our borrowing. We just think it's a smart financial move to put this money aside. Approximately $500,000 of that $1.1 million were generated through one-time revenue opportunities, land sale, the permitting for the solar panels, things of that nature, and it's just poor fiscal management to use one-time revenues for ongoing expenses. We're just gonna dig ourselves a hole that makes it more difficult for us in the spring, so I strongly hope you'll support us putting this money aside, and it's available to us if we should need it, and things do happen, but we need to put it aside and not have it available for expenditures. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments relative to Article Number Four? Seeing no one at a microphone, all of those in favor of Article Number Four, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, the two-thirds, the majority was required. Article Five, let me just be brief, before you get rolling, and explain that we're doing the same thing here on Article Number Five as we were doing on Article Number One, which is bifurcating the article, because a portion of the article has to do with borrowing money and a proportion does not, and when one borrows money, you need a two-thirds vote, and when you do not borrow money, you don't. So we're gonna do the section of the article that just needs a majority, and then we're gonna do a section of the article that requires a two-thirds majority. I'm sure that's as clear as mud to everybody, because there were handouts at the front, and I believe they were called Article Five, Motion A, and Article Five, Motion B. Motion A is the section of the article that says not require two-thirds majority, that's Motion A, and Motion B will be dead, so it's done. Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer $68,415 from free cash, and $225,655 from prison mitigation funds, to the following capital purchases, and I believe there's a list that was available in the lobby, is that up on the screen as well?
Not up on the screen, it says, "See handout." Has everyone got a handout? Certainly, the lobby is, if you need it.
Thanks, and now I believe somebody from the Capitol Committee, no, okay. Mr. Selectman Leehan spoke about how it's been quite a while since we've put money aside for our cut of Rainy Day Fund. It's been a long time since we've made any capital purchases, and I haven't seen a capital article in my entire tenure on the Advisory Committee, so this is for a series of equipment. I believe that Jack Hathaway has spent time with his staff, they've been sort of nursing things along for several years, a lot of this stuff is in dire need of either replacement or repair, and I think the list is pretty self-explanatory, it's buildings, equipment for them, I think if there's specific questions, Jack or others can probably speak to them.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments relative to Article Five, Subpart A? Seeing no one at the microphone, all of those in favor of approval of Motion A in Article Five, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, the majority was required. Motion B.
Madam Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $286,566 for the purpose of paying costs of acquiring three pickup trucks with plows, one sander body, two police utility vehicles, one police sedan, and one small sedan for the assessors department, including the payment of all other costs incidental and relative thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is hereby authorized to borrow said amount, under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, Part 9, of the general laws, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereof. As before, talked about the lack of capital investment for quite a long time, as you can see from the description, the borrowing authority being requested is for several vehicles. I believe that relates specifically to public safety and the assessors department, as well as the general use plows and such.
Questions or comments relative to Article Five, Motion B? Seeing no one at the microphone, all of those in favor of Article Five, Motion B, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, the two-thirds, the majority was required. Article Six.
Madam Moderator, I move that we approve Article Six, as is printed in the warrant. Okay? This is an article to expand an already existing liquor license to include the full sale of alcoholic beverages at that location. This is for sale, not consumption on the premises. This passage is required so that the selectmen can apply to the state to expand this particular license.
Are there any questions or comments relative to Article Number Six? Seeing none, all of those in favor of Article Number Six, as is printed in the warrant, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, the majority was required. Article Seven.
I'd like to point out that in Article Seven, there's been a change from the, what was printed in the warrant that was mailed to you. In the first paragraph, the word "day" would be replaced by "season." Madam Moderator, I move that we add section sequentially numbered to Article X of the general bylaws entitled Hunting as follows. No person shall hunt on town-owned land without the permission of the Board of Selectmen. A hunter will be allowed on private property with a written permission of the property owner. Each property owner who wishes to allow hunting on their property must file written notification in person with the Norfolk Police Department. It is the responsibility of all duly licensed hunters to register with the Norfolk Police Department each season, and again, that's the change, rather than "day," it's changed to "season," that they intend to hunt, to ascertain the location of property where hunting is prohibited, and not to exceed said boundaries. The balance of the article remains the same as was mailed, and as you see in the article. Basically, by, the Advisory Committee recommends approval, excuse me?
Madam Moderator, just point of order, I neglected to inform Mr. Butters that there was a second change, we've added language at the bottom.
Was this a handout at the front?
No, it is not.
Okay.
Explain now? You can see at the bottom of the language, at the bottom of the article, in red, we added language per request. I'll start with the whole paragraph. This bylaw is not intended to apply to a nuisance trapping in or control, and the new language is "nor to a Massachusetts hunting preserve licensed under the provisions of Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 131, Section 31."
Thank you, Jack. Actually, as, you know, to explain the article, currently, a hunter may hunt on private property, regardless of whether or not he or she is a landowner. If a landowner does not want a hunter to hunt on his or her property, it is the landowner's responsibility to post and maintain no hunting signs. By approving Article Seven, the responsibility for determining whether a hunter, hunting is allowed on a particular piece of property, is shifted from the landowner to the hunter. If a property owner wishes to grant permission for a hunter to hunt on his or her property, he or she must file written notification in person with the Norfolk Police Department. It will then be the responsibility of the duly licensed hunter to register with the Norfolk Police Department each season, the beginning of each season they intend to hunt, and to determine if, in fact, it's, hunting is allowed on such property.
I have in my notes here that there were three minutes allotted for the Board of Selectmen on this as well, but I'm seeing a shift ahead.
We can respond as necessary.
Okay, great. All right, so, any questions or comments relative to Article Seven, as it appears on the screen?
I have a question.
Beginning as a friendly amendment, by the way.
Yeah. I am Doug Curl, 8 Chatham Road, and I guess my question is related to a circumstance of hunting, I think oftentimes, it happens in the pursuit of an animal, and say the animal is wounded, and then the animal wanders onto other said property where the permission wasn't granted, which I think happens frequently. What is the, what is the, how do we address that situation? That's my question, yes.
Can we, I have a statement, I'll answer that for you. Anybody got an answer? Apparently, nobody has an answer for you, Mrs.
The bylaw doesn't address that eventuality, but in speaking to a hunter earlier today, that does happen when you've hit an animal and you have to continue to track it down. I think we would hope that everyone involved would use common sense, and we've actually talked to the chief a little bit about that, that this bylaw is gonna require a lot of common sense on all parties, so while we can't legislate for every single eventuality, I think we've built a guideline here, which puts us in the right direction, which is that people's private property should be respected, but also the hunter's ability to hunt is respected as well.
Somebody else with a question, or you have a question, Mike?
I do. My name is William Slattery, 110 Park Street, Norfolk, Mass. We own a considerable amount of property where we live, and we allow hunting there now, only to people that come and ask, and we try to keep it clean. Anyway, I do have a problem with parts of this bylaw, inasmuch as, originally, it called for the landowner to register downtown, that he did allow hunting. That would open our property to most anyone, so, because if you post your property under, I believe it's Chapter 21, Section 7, that you are exempted from responsibility and the actions of hunters. So, that's, that was the case in Norton, the person that owned the land didn't get sued over there because he didn't have it posted, and he allowed the other guy to hunt there. Well, you know, I don't wanna be put on a list where now I have to post my property, I no longer enjoy that protection under Massachusetts general law, and I find it quite disturbing. I had my own bylaw changes written up here, I'd like to amend it to what I have to say, but maybe the whole thing should be tossed and worked on more, because it seemed to me that there was a lot of work that should've gone into this that wasn't, because they missed those fine points like that, I thought they were rather crucial, even when I... Even when I went down and met with the selectmen one night here about maybe a week or so ago, and I didn't find that we had ironed this thing out beforehand. You know, I think it should have been ironed out when it went out to the people to look at it and read it in the thing, and it didn't. So, either I could make my amendment here or offer a motion for my amendment, and they could work on that, but I don't think I have all of that about the hunting preserve or whatever. I basically confined it to the first couple lines in the thing about who shouldn't, who shouldn't. It would be a lot easier requiring the person to find out where you can't hunt, and the anti-people who are against hunting aren't registering their property, so how is the police department, let alone some hunter, going to determine where he can't hunt? I don't know the answer to that, do you? He can't really unless somebody has gone down, just like when they had no spraying in this town. They all put up their signs, and they posted a squawk with the town administrator, and that was the end of it. At least they didn't spray their properties. The same thing goes with this hunting. I understand why people don't want hunting. I'm in favor of somebody asking my written permission. I don't have a problem with that. I'm not going to let somebody that I think is going to cause me trouble hunt on my property. I don't need that. No one does. I don't want them to cause my neighbors trouble. Pretty simple. The signing part, I don't have a problem with. I have a problem with the little bit that's after, that are taking away my rights, so to say, in Chapter 21, Section 7, and I do have a lot of problem with that, and I don't think it's done right in that bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Slattery. Mr. Butters indicating that he may have an answer to your question.
Fine.
So, if he can have his, sir, he'll take a seat. It's not a conversation. If I have a seat, Mr. Butters can go up to the microphone and answer that question. If you have another question or another comment, you still have another time at the microphone.
My name is Al Butters. I live on Cleveland Street, and one of the, you know, part of the discussion when we were talking about this was to eliminate the responsibility of the landowner to post those signs. So, basically, if you don't want hunting on your property right now, you don't have to do anything. If you want hunters to hunt on your property, then, you know, take it upon yourself to go to the police department and register your piece of property in writing that your property is an approved property that you'd like to have someone hunt on. I own property that's kind of, you know, triangled out into the woods, and, you know, quite honestly, I don't want to have to go out to every angle of my property that a potential hunter could see and post no hunting signs. I have three dogs, and two look like deer, you know? They're golden retrievers. I don't want to go out there and find one of them dead, you know, because somebody's happened to wander on my property. So, that's kind of the explanation that I have based upon my feeling on how we should present this.
There's a selectman that would like to speak to, I believe the question is, how are landowners protected if they don't go down to, or if they do? How are the landowners protected right now? I think--
To continue through.
My understanding is they're protected just because they don't post.
Nothing in here changes anything that's in state law, so if you enjoy protection because you do post under state law, you still enjoy that protection, you can still post. And to the best of my knowledge, this, the notification is for the police use only. We're not publicly notifying, you can hunt at Joe's property, John's property, Sam's property. And the intent is for the landowner to allow hunting only for those people who they so designate. And then those folks will call the police on a seasonal basis. I'm going to be hunting deer season on this piece of property. So, it's not going to open you up to people wandering around all over the place. If you do post because you enjoy hunting on your property, but you don't want strangers to hunt on there, so you do post on the edge, you can still continue to do that and enjoy any liability relief you may have under state law. Nothing we do on the town level can change that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir?
Ernie Alex, 40 North Street. To answer your first question, the first gentleman that was up here, you are obligated under state law, if you wound a deer, to go anywhere to try to finish off that animal. The other portion, if you're out in the woods, these lots were laid out by Indian trails where there might have been a creek, part of a stone wall. Unless you're going to have another law that every property owner has to have a land surveyor come in, survey the property, and put up bounds, I could be standing here, and office could be standing right there. How does he know that I am on what property I'm going to be fined for? There is no way in these back lots, if a property owner does not want people coming on their land, they get a registered surveyor, they put bound markers, and they are going to have to sign it. Other than that, you have no idea where you are. You're pretty close to where you are. A lot of times, you don't know your way back out again. You listen for the train. Other than that, that's the only way it can be done.
Is there anyone else who would leave comments? Comments go to the yes or no microphones, questions to the center.
John Robbins.
Oh. John Robbins, 44th Road Street in Norfolk.
I was actually born and raised in this town, and never had a problem, even when I was younger, hunting in this town. Now, I know most of the land has got built up, you know, over the years, but I think it doesn't get a lot of hunting still. And I guess I'd like to know, first of all, how was this article proposed? Was it strictly by the selectmen, by the conservation, by people in the town? Who actually brought this up?
Is that your question?
That's one.
Okay, well, then why don't you ask all of them? This isn't a conversation.
Was the police department in favor of this? In other words, Chief Stone. And how do we get permission from the selectmen to hunt a certain area? And if you're going to hunt different areas in the town, do you have to, you know, now you're changing it to a seasonal-type basis, do you designate each year before the season starts what areas you're going to be in, or does the police department have to know on a daily basis which area you're going to be in? You know, I've never had this problem.
Does that complete your bundle of questions?
So far, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so before the Board of Selectmen, there are three questions.
Sir, the article was brought forward by citizens, not by the Board of Selectmen, so it was brought forward by the community, to your first question. This was before us in the spring meeting last year, and we IP'd it because we made it too complicated, I think is a fair way to say it. It became, the police are in favor of this, but I think if Police Chief Stone were to come up and talk to this, he would tell you that he would like to have it more restrictive. He's the one that gets the phone calls when people hear a shot, a gunshot anywhere in their neighborhood, he gets the phone call. So, he would like to be able to say to that individual, "I'm aware that John Jones is hunting on property with permission, you need to relax." But when they hear a gunshot and someone calls and says that, and they don't have that information, they have to respond, because they don't know what it is. So, he would tell you, I think, and I know he can speak for himself, but I think he would tell you that he would like to see it more restrictive. What this intent, what the intent of this is to do is to, it's an issue of who has the rights. Does the hunter have the right to go on private property, or does the owner have the right to decide who goes on his or her private property? That's the fundamental issue we're trying to fix. And we changed the requirement to go down daily. That's not the requirement of this bylaw, seasonal, so that it doesn't impose any difficulty on people that want to hunt. I mean, a simple cell phone call will suffice, and I think Chief Stone would validate that, that just, hey, I'm going to be hunting in such and such a season, the owner has given me a permission to hunt on my property, all done. Not a difficult process. But it was brought forward by citizens that had hunters, whether they're local or not local, no one knows, that would go on her property, on their property, and it was endangering them. And this puts the burden on the hunter to get permission to go on private property. That's the fundamental intent of the bylaw.
Tara Worlick, 25 Lake Street. I'm the citizen who brought forth the original proposal to change or institute a bylaw. We own 22 acres of land on Lake Street. We've been there for about 12 years now. For 12 years, we've had people hunting on our land without our permission and against our desires to have people out there hunting. I've raised my boys there. There's portions of our driveway which are probably more than 500 feet from the house and more than 150 feet from the road, which would mean you could hunt there. We've put up no hunting signs. They're hard to monitor on a large piece of land, because you're supposed to be posting every 50 feet. It's not easy to do. It's not easy to make sure that they're up there every year. I understand people want to hunt, but I also understand that I should have control over what people are doing on my property. It's my land, I pay the taxes on it. I want to protect my children. I want to protect my home. I want to protect my pets. And I feel as though, you know, I've come before the board several times now trying to get more rights for myself on my own land, not to have people walking around with firearms, shooting the deer or whatever other critters they're going after. As I mentioned back in May, I had someone from Vermont hunting on my land. He came to Norfolk because he knew that our laws are not as stringent as most of the neighboring towns. I really don't feel as though this is all that onerous on the hunters. Come ask if I'm giving permission to be on my land. You know it's not your land, and as far as finding out where you are, there's GPSs. You can find out where you are in Norfolk and whether or not that land has permission to be hunted on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, sir?
Yes. Is this going--
Name and street, please.
David Axberg, 106 Seacong Street. Is this going to be posted at entry points into the town that people need to register and that they're not supposed to be doing this otherwise? Because most towns around here do realize that Norfolk has freedom to go through until this point.
We hadn't discussed it, but Walpole actually does have a very similar bylaw, and they do post on their borders, so I think it's something we should have to do.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
David Rosenberg, 123 North Street. I think I heard one of the members of the Board of Selectmen say that granting permission is not an all-or-nothing thing, that is, that it's not the case that you're granting permission to all hunters or no hunters, but rather the property owner could do that or could enumerate the specific hunters that he was allowing to permit to hunt on his property. I wanted to confirm that that's actually in the text of this bylaw?
It is in the hunter's requirement to call in and say which land he is hunting on.
Joe Creedon, 52 Tucker Road. If this is passed tonight, since deer season's on right now, is it in effect tomorrow?
No. Sorry.
Can we just sort of wait until--
[laughing]
--the question is done?
That was Rob Garrity.
I know, Mr. Robert Garrity. Yes, you waving your hand at me? Yes, did you have something else you'd like to add, Mr.--
Madam Moderator, no.
[laughing] You can tap into the mic.
John Robbins again. Does the selectmen have a list of properties that the town owns that they are going to allow hunting on at the present time?
Does that complete your question, sir? Do you have any others?
Do they have a list together now that they know of properties?
I know, I'm just asking if you have any other questions, because this is your last time at the mic. I don't want you to lose the opportunity.
Sure.
You can have a seat, they'll answer the questions.
Madam Moderator, Jack Hathaway. Right now, we certainly have a list of town-owned properties, and selectmen at this time don't have any intention of allowing hunting on town property.
I'm Joe Woodworth. It's a question. Joe Woodworth, Barnstable Road. So, I grew up here in Norfolk. My father grew up in Norfolk. I'm raising two boys in Norfolk as well, hunted here, fished here all my life. The question I have is, I'm recognizing that this is going to be restrictive on a lot of hunters. A lot of hunting areas are probably closed down because the landowners probably will not go register their property for hunting, so that's going to change things. Has anybody consulted mass wildlife to see what the impact's going to be? Deer population increases, more accidents, things like that? That's it, yep.
Apparently, the non-voting body likes that. Does anyone, does anybody have an answer to the question about how this impacts the wildlife?
It is a good point. I don't know the answer to that, but I want to answer one other question, not to pick on Mr. Hathaway, but the Board of Selectmen has never discussed hunting on town property, so--
Nice.
It's--
Do you have intentions of letting them?
We've never discussed it, and I can't speak for the board. So, I mean, it's an issue that's never come before us, and we've never discussed it. So, to say that we have no intentions isn't fair. I think this board has always entertained any citizens' wishes on any subject, and if that is the case, you should come before us and we'll talk about it. But we have not ever discussed that, to my knowledge. Just to clarify that.
Seeing no one at the question, the yes or the no microphone, all of those in favor of approval of Article 7 as printed on the screen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Where are my vote counters? All right. Greg Merlett, Paul Perio. Hey, guys, sorry you come in too late. I'd already written the card down. The next time, next time. Maybe more than one tonight. He's trying to fix my mic, though. But I think you guys can hear me through the loudspeaker. You take this side. See, this side. Good? Great, you're telling me to do this.
Oh, I need a pen.
I'm going to repeat what I just said. I'm going to ask all those in favor. When you're in favor, I don't vote. Put up your card. These nice gentlemen are going to count the cards. Do not put your card down until they've reported their numbers to me. Then, you put your card down, and I'll ask them again, and then those cards go up, repeat as necessary. So, all of those in favor, approval of Article 7 as printed on the wall, please hold up your card.
Come on, John, hold it high, hold it high.
I'm Dan, I'm sitting in the visitor's social.
Captain, can you come up and report them? You put your arms down now. All right, arms are down, now. All of those opposed, arms up.
He cares.
Dad, I need a shout-out.
Nope. He doesn't have a card. I hope somebody in the audience-- Oh, yes, he does, sorry.
We don't need that. I've been talking into it for 10 minutes.
I told you, it's special.
Point asked.
Okay, arms down. Now I'm going to my handy-dandy shout-out. There were 56 in favor, 42 against. It's the majority that carries. The ayes have it, Article 8. Thank you, gentlemen, count your votes.
Madam Moderator, I move that we approve Article 8 as shown on the screen and as was printed in the warrant. Under the existing bylaws, zoning bylaws, any subdivision being built with 10 or more homes, we, a couple years ago, passed a requirement that the developer is obligated to add some units to the affordable housing stock of the town, and the sort of default position is that those new affordable units have to be built within that same subdivision. default position is that those new affordable units have to be built within that same subdivision. But there is an exemption granted, and what this language, as you can see the underlined language here, attempted to do was to provide some clarification in situations where there was a need to put those affordable units not within the subdivision. There's a special permit granting authority, the planning board in this case, that can authorize that. And this language change just basically clarifies the conditions under which those affordable units can be built off-site. And then also, if that happens, that you can't then replace the lots that were designated for the affordable within the subdivision with market rate units.
Is there anyone who has a recommendation for the planning board?
Palterio, 57 Rockwood Road. Who is on the SPGA?
Planning board.
You're not planning boards?
Oh, no.
But that's for recommendation for the planning board. I'll let him call on a new board. He is a multitasker, that guy. Mr. Halupa?
Hello, Madam Moderator. How are you? Thank you.
Recommendation for the planning board, please.
The planning board recommends that Article 8 be approved as written in the warrant. A key element of the Chapter 40B, the state's Affordable Housing Zoning Law, requires that communities within the Commonwealth have a minimum of 10% affordable housing. The town requires that new subdivisions, which number 10 homes or greater, include 10% affordable housing units. While the affordable units are generally sighted within the subdivision, in some cases, the town can benefit from allowing the affordable units to be sighted outside the subdivision. A recent example of this involved the Fox Run subdivision, formerly known as Toils End subdivision, located on the Norfolk-Rentham line. In this recent example, the town secured an additional affordable unit be constructed by the developer. Article 8 simply clarifies that the town can allow affordable units to be sighted outside the subdivision in cases where it may further benefit the town.
Any other questions or comments relative to Article number 8? Head on up to the microphone, folks. Don't be shy.
I am Stephen McClane. I'm on the planning board also. If you look through this, you can see that H3E1 clearly states that it's supposed to be inside the subdivision. What happened was, a year after the original zoning went through, the ability to be able to build off-site was added. And what happened was, it created a conflict. And we really didn't notice that there was a conflict until a developer came to town, wanted to put in a subdivision, and said, "Oh, well, I'm not going to put them inside my subdivision. I'm going to build them out in the town." And we said, "Oh, no, no. You're required to put them inside the subdivision." And that's when we discovered that it wasn't quite as clear as it should have been. So representative of the Board of Selectmen and a representative of the planning board got together and drafted this language that you see in here to tighten it up so that if it is outside the subdivision, that it is within the purview of the planning board to decide whether or not it's a benefit to the town.
Question?
Yes. Cindy Andre, 17 Worcester Road. My question, I guess, for the planning board is, it says in the bottom here, the affordable units won't be replaced with additional market rate units. So does that mean that those lots stay empty instead or are combined into open space?
Anyone want to answer her? Maybe you shouldn't have gone all the way back to your seat.
I didn't go back.
Well, pull your chair up.
The lots either would be redesigned or left empty. They would just relay out the subdivision if they can't add more houses to the subdivision.
Peg Driscoll Johnson, 3 Brewster Road. My question is about what happened this last time with the Fox Run houses. The town provided the property. Should it not be specific in the article as to who's responsible for providing the property in the future? Because we've maybe set a precedent where we've provided the property and the builder has provided the housing or the house stock. So I'm just curious how we might protect ourselves in the future from somebody saying, "Well, you provided the property for the last person who built his outside of his subdivision."
Come back up.
There is nothing that says that the town is going to provide the land. When the affordable housing was built for the Fox Run subdivision, the reason that we so quickly allowed them was because we happened to have the land, and we wanted quickly to get some houses onto it. So that's the reason why the land that the town owned was originally used for the affordable housing. So there's four houses there, but we got an extra house out of it over on one of the lakes. It's actually affordable housing with lakefront.
Are you answering or adding?
Adding information?
Okay.
In that case of Fox Run 2, the town is keeping the proceeds of the sale of those houses too. So it's a little different than the normal situation.
Anyone else with a question or comment relative to Article number 8? Someone coming up?
Fred Hassler, 1 Caucet Avenue. My question is, what's the definition of a clear benefit to the town? And instance of this is, isn't it, is it always in the clear benefit of a town to keep a big subdivision with, you know, million-dollar houses whole to preserve pet taxes, and then move the low-income housing to one side of the town to have all the tax base there while you keep the whole tax base and the market and the values of that subdivision high? Isn't that always in the clear benefit of the town to move the low-income housing out of subdivision? Thank you.
Mr. Leehan is going to answer that question.
I think there'll be several of us that'll answer that question. There is absolutely no intent to do that, but let me give a little bit of background about why we pursue affordable homes. If any of you remember what happened or are aware of what happened in our neighboring town of Medfield, a lot of you know what 40B projects are. 40B project can be friendly or unfriendly. The state mandates that every town in the state of Massachusetts have an affordable housing strategy to reach 10% of their housing to an equivalent of 10%. We are currently a little under 3% in the town of Norfolk. Franklin is at 10% to give you a town that's already reached that. If you do not have a plan set with the state, you are vulnerable, you are very vulnerable to what's known as an unfriendly 40B, where someone can come in anywhere in our community, and it allows them to circumvent a good deal of our zoning and could build apartments with a level of density that our current zoning does not allow. That has happened in Walpole, Canton, Dedham, Sharon, Stoughton, and now Medfield. We do have an affordable housing plan filed with the state, and we've adopted the housing trust. The strategy of the housing trust is to create individual, single-family homes throughout the community. They must comply with the neighborhood. They have to be very similar to the homes in the neighborhood. If you've driven by the homes on Boardman and Gumps on Rockwood, I would hope that you would find those homes to be very nice. In regard to the gentleman that asked a question about that, it was a very unique set of circumstances. We were able to negotiate a deal that I would love to see the town negotiate every time, but I think it's unlikely that it will happen again. We were able to get those homes built at no cost to you or I, to the taxpayers, on land that we owned, and we get to keep the proceeds of the sale. We actually end up with a net profit from this process. Those funds will be used to secure more opportunities for single-family, and we do it because morally and ethically is the right thing to do. There's no plan or intent to cluster these. In fact, the strategy is exactly the opposite.
Thank you. At the yes microphone?
Yes, rare at the yes microphone, I suppose. Let me dovetail with something that Jim said. Jay Tallerman, 11 Chickadee Drive.
It actually works, so.
Yes. It is a moral obligation, because we're never going to hit our numbers for 40B. But I think in response to the question raised, I do a lot of affordable housing. There's tons of studies that say there's no impact to values or taxes from mixing lower, moderate-income houses in with other developments. I'm actually not entirely in favor of moving affordable units out of a mixed income development because I think it could potentially stigmatize those affordable units. But here, and I think the town has demonstrated through its recent work, any affordable unit that we can provide, if it helps facilitate the development to get it off-site, I'm in favor of it. So I think we should vote yes on this one.
Thank you. Seeing no one else at a yes, no, or question microphone, all of those in favor of approval of Article 8 as it is printed in the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Two-thirds was required. Article 9.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 9 as printed in the warrant. Article 9 basically makes it easier for developers to get certain tests made before they go for a building permit. There are certain lots that there might be ledge, might be issues about citing the sewage, that sort of thing, that where's the foundation going to go, that require some testing to determine accurately, might require cutting a tree or two or that sort of thing. That's difficult at the moment, and the purpose of this article is to make that easier for builders. The planning board will also need to speak to this as well.
Planning board, please approach the microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The planning board recommends that Article 9 be approved as written in the warrant. The current bylaw requires that a building permit be obtained by the developer prior to tree clearing and excavation. While the intent of the bylaw is good, it often creates problems in practice. For example, in order for a developer to conduct site survey work, they need to provide sufficient access to the property to accommodate equipment commonly used for digging and drilling, to assess soils, and in some cases, the presence of ledge. For a single-family dwelling in an approved subdivision, the information obtained allows the developer to request a sufficiently detailed building permit. The need to have a building permit prior to land clearing and excavation is therefore in conflict with the legitimate needs of the developer. Article 9 is intended to remedy this conflict.
Mr. Leehan from the Board of Selectmen. Again, I don't know why I'm leaning in. It doesn't work. What would you like to add?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We'd like to add an amendment to this article, please.
Okay. So, we're tabling the article as before the town meeting, and you're moving to amend the article?
I'm moving to...
Ooh, looky, there I am.
I'm moving to amend the article.
I'm live. Do you have a second?
Second.
I would like to amend the article as follows. After Section D1, after the sentence "D1," I'd like to insert the following language. Until a building permit has been granted, clearing of the side setbacks is limited to 50 feet from the street right-of-way.
Are you going to put accept that?
Is that the only amendment?
Accept that.
Accept, accept.
You didn't say that you accept that.
Sorry. I left out "accept that." Sorry. As it is indicated in red on the screen.
So, the current motion before you is whether or not to amend Article 9 to that which appears above us. All of those in favor of amending the article, this isn't deciding the article, it's just whether or not we're going to decide the amended article. All of those in favor of amending the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Majority, I heard one nay, but fortunately, at this point in the process, it's just a majority to amend the article as opposed to the article itself, which requires a two-thirds majority.
Mr. Leehan wants to know if you want him to explain the amendment.
No, he doesn't. It's already been approved.
Okay. Thank you.
So, there we go. So he can talk about it now. We're back to the main article. The amended article is what's before the body. Now the body's going to decide whether they're going to approve the article as amended. Mr. Leehan, would you like to speak on the article as amended?
I guess I'm afraid to at this point. It was already passed. The reason we would like to have this, we amended this, is while we're in favor of the article, when we were working this through, we also want to ensure that we protect the buffers associated with other property lines. When we thought this through, it appeared that it was not knowing the location of the home, which is required under a building permit, it would have been possible for a builder to claim that the house was being placed within 25 feet of a property line, and under our bylaw, he is allowed to clear the 25 feet in the back of the constructed home, thus going all the way to the neighboring property line. So by inserting this language, it assumes that the home is being located 50 feet from the street for all intensive purposes, which what our zoning requires, that it be at least 50 feet. And if there is any exception, so this restricts any developer's ability from clearing to someone's property line, which was the risk that we felt was in the original language. If the builder wants to exceed that limitation, then in fact, he has to go and get a building permit, which would require him to locate the house, and it would allow the building inspector to protect the buffers. So that is the reason we amended it, so that we had some additional assurance that a developer could not violate our buffers on abutting property.
Thank you, Mr. Leehan. Are there any questions or comments relative to Article 9? Seeing no one at a microphone except for Mr. Rosenberg.
Sorry.
Name and street address, please, sir?
Oh, yes. David Rosenberg, 123 North Street. The wording that says, I'm sorry, clearing of side setbacks is limited to 50 feet from the street right-of-way, doesn't really say which side of the 50 feet. That is, I assume from what Mr. Leehan said, the intention was that it be limited to be more than 50 feet away from the right-of-way. But the other interpretation of that is it could be, you have to be within 50 feet or less from the right-of-way. So I guess I consider this wording ambiguous.
Finished with your question, Mr. Rosenberg?
I think I'll stop here.
Great. Mr. Leehan?
Well, I'm not sure now what the question was. Our current bylaw requires a home to be set 50 feet back from the street, from the right-of-way. This is assuming that that's where the home will be sighted. The home, then, there are provisions for the developer to clear around the footprint of the house and around the footprint of the septic system. So with this language, we're assuming that all homes in the subdivision will be located accordingly, just 50 feet back from the street, thus restricting a certain distance, if you will, from which the clearing could take place, and preventing someone from clearing all the way back to a property line and claiming that the home was going to be placed within 25 feet of the property, which is the amount he can clear outside of the foundation. And we were concerned that if there were some intent to do that, that that bylaw might, in essence, allow that. And once, I think as we all know, once an area is cleared, it's, while we can find them and do all of these things, the damage is done. So we're trying to prevent it.
Any other questions or comments relative to Article 9? Seeing no one at a microphone, all of those in favor of approval of Article 9 as it appears and as amended up on the screen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a two-thirds majority. Two-thirds majority does carry it. The ayes have it. Article 10.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant. This article would allow essentially a doubling of the density of bedrooms in the business, the B1 district, the business district. Basically, the intent of this is to allow greater development of residential homes in the business area with the idea of encouraging mixed use so that there could be a higher number of residential units that would support the businesses in that area, since it is the business district, and this would be a mixed-use kind of a situation. Again, the planning board will also have to comment on this.
My notes for this suggest the planning board has three minutes to speak and has two slides. Don't disappoint us.
We'll try not to. Okay, the planning board recommends that Article 10 be amended, and I believe we have the amendments. Jack, do you have? Okay. I move that Article 10 be amended by adding the words, quote, "20 units per acre," quote, before the phrase, quote, "32 bedrooms for any single lot," quote.
before the phrase, quote, "32 bedrooms for any single lot," quote.
One more. I'm saying, is it making it more than what the article was when people were going to want? Is it outside the scope of the law? Sorry about that. Okay. That's what's before the meeting. Not approval of the article, but a motion to amend the article. All of those in favor of amending, oh, you have a question about-
Do have a question.
All right, let's hear the question about amending the article, not the article, amending it.
Question, David Axberg, 106 Secong Street. Doing this, changing this, would this be apropos to affordable housing, and would that help in the affordable housing side of life if we were to put some kind of affordable housing requirement in getting this added benefit?
It's your motion.
So the question is whether it would allow for more affordable units? Is that what the question, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand the question.
By allowing the 20 units per acre, or the 32 bedrooms, with that change, leave the old amendment there, but if a developer wanted to change that, it would have to be for affordable housing. That would give you an incentive to get more affordable housing in the town of Norfolk under these jurisdictions.
So if I understand correctly, you're suggesting that one way to approach is to keep the 16 bedrooms and then have the 32 be basically-
Folks, I'm going to interrupt you, and I apologize for that.
I know.
After further conference, we have determined that this motion is outside the scope of the original warrant article, and I'll explain that for the folks in the viewing audience. We can't amend an article to make something more than what folks who had read the warrant at home and decided not to come would have anticipated. And I'm viewing this, and I'm being told by others, that by handing this amendment up on the night of the town meeting, not the afternoon of town meeting, and not the morning of town meeting, that this is, from our knee-jerk reaction, this night, outside the scope in the original warrant motion stance.
Okay, so in terms of legal opinion, when this was communicated approximately a week or so ago, did that legal opinion-
They never gave that to me.
So they never responded until tonight, in terms of legal opinion on this?
That's correct.
Okay. That's unfortunate, but. Point of inquiry?
Well, sure, point of order. If somebody can answer his question, then we can leave it as the motion.
His question, his question is-
This question?
Yeah. Answer his question on the motion to amend, and we'll leave it. We'll work on the motion to amend.
David, your question, this is-
Me. Okay. The density, adding a density, doesn't, it relates to all development, regardless of the type of development. So it doesn't have any effect on the ability to put in affordable housing or not put in affordable housing. It strictly defines a density that's allowed on that lot, on that piece of land. So it doesn't, it's not bonus affordable housing, it's just a definition of how much you can build on a property. It's not, it has no more relevance to affordable housing than it does to any of the other zoning or requirements.
Andrea, before you leave, I'm going to ask you, because I'm getting mixed opinions from the folks on the stage.
Oh, I'm Andrea Langhoub.
I know, I know. I'm asking Andrea, do you think that this is outside the scope of the original article?
Well-
Given your experience, would people not-
No, I don't, because we discussed it, and it came out of the Planning Board's public hearing, and-
I'm not talking about whether it was a public hearing or not.
No, 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 we, no, we, and in that discussion, we discussed at great length, you know, how to word it in a way that stays within the intent of the bylaw and make sure that we didn't limit the, or change the meaning of it. We were just, we, the 32 bedrooms for a single lot, does not speak to the density, because a lot has very different meanings depending on where you are. So it can mean one thing in one place, another thing in another place, and frankly, sometimes it can't even be physically constructed. So we wanted to, we wanted people to understand that we, under no circumstances, did we expect it to ever be more than 20 units per acre, even if the math worked out differently.
So it's limiting.
So it was meant to more clearly defined.
Okay. Then that's fine. Then the motion stays. Do you have any other question, do you have a question as to whether, on the motion?
Motion stays, okay.
So the motion stays. Now, all of those in favor of amending, now that I've completely confused everybody, all of those in favor of amending Article 10 to read as it reads on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Fortunately, it's a majority for amendment. Now, it's two-thirds for allowance of Article 10 as amended. So let's hear you on why people should, should or should not vote in favor of or against Article 10 as amended.
Jeff Palumbo, Chairman, Planning Board. Currently, residential development in the B1 district is limited to 16 bedrooms per lot, which restricts the number of two-bedroom dwelling units that can be built. Article 10 would increase the number of bedrooms allowed in the B1 district from 16 bedrooms per lot to 32 bedrooms per lot, permitting construction of buildings with retail shops on the first floor and two residential floors above. This will provide for a better mix of one- and two-bedroom units, which will add value to the development, and will support retail development by increasing the number of residents living in the town center. However, while the intent of the original Article 10 is to provide more flexibility and incentive to developers to construct housing in the B1 district, the purpose of the amendment to Article 10 is to limit the maximum of density allowed to a level that is in line with other nearby towns, as well as the state guidelines for Chapter 40R development. 40R development is development in transportation-oriented districts. And just a further comment, and it's kind of related to some of Andrea's comments, one of the things that's apparent when you deal with the zoning, the zoning that exists today within the town, is it's very difficult to pull it all together, because you have different units, you talk about bedrooms, you talk about acres, you talk about lots, and I could continue, footage, square footage. So, having said all that, the idea is to clarify by adding the 20 units per acre comment, it's to clarify the density and the fact that the intent is not to increase density to a point where we, perhaps, I think many of us would not feel very good about our town center. So we're trying to remain consistent with the master plan, and we believe the amendment does that.
At the no microphone.
Jay Tallerman, Chickity Drive. I'd recommend a no vote here, not because 20 units per acre is, in all cases, bad, but by right, I think it's too much. It already says there, except by special permit. Given the character of our town center, in a mixed-unit development, to have 20 units additional per acre, I think it's just too much by right. We have the protections of special permit, where you can review the appropriateness of that. I'd leave it at the 16, and then if someone wants to do more, they can apply for it and get a special permit, where we can review things like parking and drainage, aesthetics, and everything else. But to do it by right could invite the kind of project we won't want to see in our town center. Thanks.
Thank you.
Christina Gleason, 249 Main Street. I have a question. If that were all built out under those specifications, how many more people would that be in the town center?
Does anyone have an answer to that question? Apparently, no, no answer to the question.
They haven't, they haven't, they haven't done.
Okay. The answer is they haven't done the math. At the question microphone.
Ontario, 57 Rockwood Road. I was wondering if by changing this amended, amending this article, would this favorably enhance any current developments under consideration in the B1 district?
Question is now, will this favorably enhance any developments currently in consideration? Does anyone have an answer? Andrea's pushing the chairman. Very subtle.
The short answer is yes.
The gentleman asked.
At the question microphone.
David Rosenberg, North Street. This article sounded pretty sensible to me, and I was inclined to support it, but then what Mr. Tallerman said also sounded pretty sensible, and I was wondering if any of the proponents of this article have any response to Mr. Tallerman's comments.
Jeff Palumbo, Planning Board Chairman. You know, I think what I'd like to do is to just point out the fact that several articles that we're going to be discussing this evening were discussed in greater detail during the course of the summer, when our zoning bylaw study committee, which includes representatives from multiple boards, participated in in-depth discussions. We have eight or so articles here this evening, which are a product of those discussions. Now, this particular one, we're coming forth with an amendment to what originally was proposed by the zoning bylaw study committee, but I certainly look to members of that committee that are here this evening to support this article, because in fact, the essence of this article came from those activities that took place this summer. We also had a very robust public hearing, the Planning Board, and I know the advisory committee did as well.
At the yes microphone.
Pat Snead, 19 Frederickson Road. I just would mention also that a common theme in several of these articles, including this one, was that there is a difference for a developer in knowing what he can do versus what he might be able to do, in looking at Norfolk and trying to figure out what kind of projects that would be viable in this town, and whether they would be viable financially for the developer.
Question?
Fred Hessler, 1 Calusett Avenue. Could somebody in the Planning Board please tell us what development would be affected by this motion, and by this, and how the effect would happen? Thank you.
Prior to Planning Board speaking, I'll take the no comment, just because they seem to be collaborating.
That's fine. David Axberg, again, 106 Secong Street. 20 units per acre in the B1 district makes sense. That means we get two more, or another unit in the affordable housing. That makes sense to some degree, but the developer's getting an extra 10 units, per se. To do that, I would say a no vote at this point, double the affordable housing to four if they get the 10. Put some kind of wording in there, normal zoning's 10 units, you can go to 20 units if you double the requirement on the affordable housing. Gives us more affordable housing in a district, that makes more sense to me.
Thank you. To the Planning Board, before Mr. Tallerman takes his second strike at the microphone, can someone from the Planning Board please answer the question that was asked by Mr. Hessler, relative to whether or not you can identify which project or projects are going to be impacted by Article 10?
I appreciate the point of clarification, the opportunity to clarify. The Economic Development Committee has been working on various conceptual plans for town center and various types of development, and in fact, that is the type of development which I was referring to. So we don't have a proposal, if you will, from a developer who's ready to move ahead with a project. We have conceptual plans based on, quite frankly, the limitations we have in our town center, because we don't have waste treatment resources. We can probably create stormwater management resources to facilitate development, but we definitely have some constraints on development in the center of town. So the Economic Development Committee has put together various types of scenarios to show that development is possible, and that's one of the reasons why we're here talking about articles such as these, because these are intended to be consistent with all those discussions that have taken place the last few years, as far as what we need to do to start moving in the direction of development for our town center.
Mr. Tallerman?
With all due respect to my friend Pat Snead, just a couple of counterpoints. One, developers that are doing large projects, certainly more than 20 units in mixed use, are quite used to special permits. It's routine and typical. Second, I'm not sure I'm ultimately concerned with what's easiest for a developer in our town center. If we're going to cram a lot of density in our town center, I think the special permit process is the right way to go.
Thank you.
To further add to the Planning Board Chairman's response, Jay suggested that if there was no special permit, then there would be, wouldn't be a level of review from the Planning Board, but because this is the B1 district, there would still be a site plan review, so we still would be reviewing the plan.
Kevin Gleason, 249 Main Street. And this level of abstraction is beyond me. I cannot figure out from looking at that map or any of these handouts, what the heck is a B1 besides a vitamin? So what are the limits of, can you show me a picture on the overhead where B1 is, so I can get more of a conceptual view of this?
Madam Moderator, I think we can pull that map up.
They're going to pull the map up, Mr. Gleason, if you can have a seat.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else with a question or comment relative to Article 10 as amended? Seeing no one at the microphones, which they know they're supposed to be at, if they want a question or comment, all of those in favor of Article Number 10 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I don't think we have a two-thirds majority, I think the noes carry. Article 11.
Madam Moderator, may we count?
What's the rule on that? So now you're moving to-
People rise.
Huh?
If seven people rise.
All right, so we're going to need seven people to rise from the audience, because Mr. Garrity would like a count. We're clear on who on the record wants it. One, two, three, now the four. I need seven people in order to do a count.
Seven people to have a count.
All right. Did either of my counters speak? Nope. Come on up. Everybody, here's the rule, as we did last time. Luckily, Sean's better at math than me, so he can do the, you guys ready? Just do that, everybody on the stage, everyone here.
What are you guys doing?
Here we go again. All of those in favor of Article 10 as amended, please hold up your cards, nice and high. In favor. As before, all of those again. As before, all of those against. Nice and high, in the air. All of those opposed, in the air, please. Are your math skills good, Mr. Garrity?
Not two-thirds, so I can't do that. I can do three-quarters, but...
I could do 10ths.
Scott can do it over here.
I can do the two-thirds. It fails.
Yeah, I struggle with math, so I had to have a couple other people tell me. The noes are going to wish it was a majority because, a simple majority, because the noes had 47. The yeses had 38. So, I guess I have it backwards. The noes won. I have, yeah, I had it right. The noes are glad that it's a two-thirds majority. The nays have it. As I said before we did the hand count, the nays carry it. Article 11. Booyah.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 11 as printed in the warrant. This article basically extends some of the benefits that are available to what's called a planned multi-lot development to B-1 lots that are not part of a planned multi-lot development. Specifically, again, planning board is going to do a better job than I of this, but basically, within a planned multi-lot development, you can do certain things such as have residential buildings separate from business buildings. Whereas outside of that scenario, mixed use is required. What this article does is allows residential-only buildings as long as they don't exceed 65% of the development. So it allows mixed use, but mixed use to separate buildings as opposed to mixed use within a single building.
Planning Board?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The planning board recommends that Article 11 be approved as written in the warrant. Currently, in the B-1 district, mixed-use development is allowed by right, but only if residences are located on the second and third floors above retail stores on the first floor. Mixed-use development with buildings that have residences on the first floor are allowed in the B-1 district by special permit within planned multi-lot developments, otherwise known as the PMLDs, of 80,000 square feet or greater. The special permit process increases the complexity and uncertainty of the approval process and discourages developer commitments to projects. Article 11 would amend Section I 7A allowed uses to allow residential dwelling units in mixed-use projects by right, whether they are on the first, second, or third floors on lots as small as 30,000 square feet.
Are there any questions or comments relative to Article 11 as printed in the warrant? Seeing no one at a microphone, all of those in favor of approval of Article 11 as written in the warrant, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. A two-thirds majority was required. Article 12.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant. This is basically just, right now, this is a three-story limit in buildings and is also a 40-foot limit. And by adding this six additional feet to 46 feet, it allows the builder the opportunity to at least add a pitched roof, which I think we'd all rather see a pitched roof as opposed to a flat roof.
Planning Board?
Planning Board recommends that Article 12 be approved as written in the warrant. The allowed height increases from 40 feet to 46 feet, which will enable three-story buildings to be constructed with pitched rooftops. This is generally regarded as a more aesthetically pleasing design versus flat-top roofing.
Any questions or comments relative to Article 12? Seeing no one at a microphone, all of those in favor of Article 12, approval of Article 12 as written in the warrant, please say aye. Opposed? It is unanimous, two-thirds was required. Article 13.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant. This article adds a new definition for dwelling unit. It's different than a single-family dwelling and requires only off-street parking space for this newly-defined unit. And it only requires one space instead of the two required for a single-family dwelling. The lower amount of required parking for this new category gives the builders a little bit more flexibility when, and how to utilize parking. And this is, we're talking about the downtown primarily, and it would be where you have residential and business mixed use. There'd be parking set aside that could be used for both business and residential.
From the planning board?
Planning Board recommends that Article 13 be approved as written in the warrant.
Any questions or comments relative to Article 13?
Jay Tallerman, Chickadee Drive. I am in favor of a reduced parking load for these types of units, but one per just doesn't work. I've worked on hundreds and hundreds of projects. A more typical number that you'd see could go as low as one and a half. But if you're doing one per, especially in a town where even a single-bedroom unit's likely to yield two cars or could have visitors, one's just not enough. Most studies reveal that you need at least one and a half. So unless it's amended up to one and a half, which would probably be beyond the scope, I'd recommend a no vote.
Anyone else like to comment or question Article 13 as it appears in the warrant? Seeing no one at the microphone. All of those in favor of approval of Article 13 as appeared in the warrant, please say aye. Opposed? I'm going to have to do the count, aren't I? Mr. Merlus, Mr. Terrio, come on back up. We have a lot of two-third votes on tonight, folks. Maybe we could do less next time. All right. All of those in favor. You know the drill, gentlemen, right? All of those in favor. Up and high, nice and high. This is the yea vote.
Vote yea vote.
Yes.
You want to vote yes on this?
I'd like to see a one and a half, too.
I don't know if you got you.
My glasses are cut, so I can just see you waving at me. All right, hands down. All those opposed, nice and high.
You going to get up and do that?
Yeah, I think so.
21.
19? There were 34 in favor and 40 against. The nays carry it. It does not pass.
Madam Moderator, I move reconsideration. I voted in the prevailing side. And I move it, because I actually believe in what Mr. Tallerman said, I think a one and a half would be a very good ratio for the downtown in that kind of development. I know I lived in an apartment downtown my first time here, and one and a half was fine for us. I do agree that one is too draconian, but one and a half works. So I would move, if I, if you would not rule an amendment to one and a half is beyond the scope, because right now, it's more than one and a half. So one and a half is between one and whatever it is right now, which seems to be...
So I'm clear. You're not moving to reconsider the motion as it was presented and voted. You're moving to amend an article that was already decided.
I am moving to reconsider because then I can move to amend. If reconsideration prevails, then I can move to amend that article.
All right. So now the issue before the body, since it did not, since it did not carry Article 13 failed, there is a motion to reconsider the vote on Article 13. Who would like to speak in favor of reconsideration of Article 13?
Arthur Franzak, 14 Main Street. What's that?
Or you can have a question.
Yes, I have a question. I know folks are discussing one versus 1.5. I'm just curious, was this specific question raised at any of the hearings during this very lengthy process? Thank you.
Someone from the planning board, they're shaking their heads no.
Although some of the articles that we're discussing this evening experienced quite a bit of debate and we had to really work through some significant questions, this was not one of those articles. This was seen as fairly straightforward through the public hearing process.
David Rosenberg, North Street. I voted against this article because I thought that one was too small a number. And so I'm supporting the reconsideration because I would have voted in favor if it had been one and a half.
Jack Hathaway, Town Administrator. I just have a question about how one and a half, the mechanics of that would work.
Smart car.
Mr. Tallerman's going to answer that question.
These are going to be multifamily, so what I would recommend is one and a half with a proviso or an asterisk that could go below the table, that you always round up. You do a calculation based on total number of units and you round up in case you have a half a parking space. Fairly common. So can be done.
Follow up on my question?
You can follow up on your question.
I guess, I get the simple math. I'm thinking more about policing it. And when you have a unit, when you have 20 units and it's been approved for 30 parking spaces, five years down the road, you've got every person there with two cars. What...
That goes in the category of buyer's remorse, Jack. But, you know, one and a half, some might say, is too low, too. I'm conscious of trying to facilitate some kind of increased density and not have such a hard parking requirement. One and a half has proved to be about as low as you can go. And with perhaps some other shared parking and other parking incentives for people, you could probably make it work at one and a half. It may not be enough, but one certainly won't be. I could get behind one and a half. To make it complicated, the number, more common number you see is 1.8, but I'm not going to bore a town meeting with that.
No math. Go back to your seat.
I wasn't aware there'd be a test.
I don't have enough fingers. All right, all of those, and this requires a simple majority rather than a two-thirds majority. All of those in favor of moving to reconsider Article 13? All we're doing is putting it back in play. All of those in favor, please say aye. All of those opposed? The ayes carry it. Article 13 is back in play, and I suspect I'm going to hear a motion. Do I hear a motion to amend Article 13 so we all get out of here tonight?
Madam Moderator, I move to amend Article 13 by striking one, putting 1.5 with an asterisk, with an asterisk below the table saying to be rounded up to the nearest full parking lot.
Do we have a second? Do we have any questions or comments as to whether or not we should amend Article 13? This is just to amend. This isn't deciding whether we like one and a half parking spots. This is just to amend the article to say one and a half parking spots. At the no microphone on the motion just to amend.
Just to amend. David Axberg, 106 Secong Street. I manage condominiums, been doing it for over 20 years now. We never have enough parking because the developers are only required to put in one and a half spots. We're always behind the eight ball on one and a half spots. So I would say, don't take this amendment.
Well, everybody can come up to a microphone if they have a question or a comment, but hand raising isn't going to work.
Julie Redd, 6 Montauk. This is probably a silly question, but what, can someone come up and explain what happens when you don't have enough of parking spaces? What's the downside to the town? Like, do people start parking illegally? If someone could just expand on that.
Madam Moderator, Robert Garrity, 123 Borderin Street. So the idea of the downtown was to have a transit-oriented development downtown with shared parking. That's the concept that we're working on. We don't want to wash our downtown with impervious cement surfaces so people can park their cars. And the idea is that many of the people, most of the people, hopefully, that choose to live in the downtown are choosing that because their availability of train station, they don't need two cars, the family can have one car. And with one and a half, if you have a 20-unit development, you'll have 30 parking spaces. So each unit would get one space, and then there'd be the common visitor parking areas. That works, and actually, downtown Foxborough has that kind of zoning right now, and they don't even have a train station. So with a station and with larger amounts of parking, which we have in the downtown now, we do have large parking lots. And that was the idea when the grocery store was first permitted years and years ago, is that their parking lot would be available for shared as well. With train station, shared parking lots, you don't need to have all this impervious cement surface in your downtown. You can make it a nice transit-oriented development downtown where people walk to the train, they walk to the stores, they don't need two cars. And that saves them. A car payment is, comes up to be almost a mortgage. You can buy a lot more house if you don't have the two cars you're paying for. So that's why I really support the idea of downgrading the parking. And if one and a half can work, let's try that. Thank you.
Anyone, at the no microphone on the motion to amend?
Yes, this is Scott Bragg, 123 Borderin Street. One's definitely not enough. Sounds like one and a half might be, but then other people are saying it might not be. It sounds like we need to have some more information to make this decision. I mean, that's my kind of take. And maybe we should just kind of pause, get some input. It doesn't sound like there's a lot of discussion at this before. So let's just pause, leave it dead, and come back with a number in the next meeting that everybody agrees is the right number. That's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you very much. At the yes microphone on the motion to amend?
Pat Snead, Frederickson Road. I would just point out that this is a minimum and it's not an upper limit. So any development is free to go above the minimum should they decide that it's commercially necessary or commercially makes the property more desirable.
Seeing no one else at a yes, no, or question microphone relative to the... No, so you got to learn. Get up to the mic. You can go, but at a mic. Stay at a mic.
I was just going to add to that, that if I was buying a piece, you know, a property or a one-bedroom unit, and we have two cars, I'm not going to buy the property. If we potentially have one and a half and we have one car and we have an occasional guest, you know, I mean, maybe that one and a half would work. So I support the one and a half.
Thank you, Mr. Butters. All of those in favor, and again, this is a simple majority, all of those in favor of amending Article 13 to read 1.5 cars as opposed to one car, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes carry it. It is amended. Now, let's get to debating Article 13 as amended. Anyone care to come up and question or comment about 1.5 cars? Seeing no one at a microphone. Oh, I spoke too slow. At the no microphone relative to 1.5 cars.
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay, we're here.
David Axberg, 106 Secong Street. Every development I manage is in Canton or Stoughton within walking distance of the train. They still don't have enough parking at one and a half spaces. Sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question or comment relative to Article 13 as amended?
I guess I'm looking at it as though, it's not as if we find out one and a half isn't enough, that the development... that the developer's going to come back and voluntarily add spaces so that the town and the public parking in town isn't being used by residents of the multifamily development.
Thank you. At the yes microphone.
Mark Waldman Sagamore. I've been listening to town meeting, trying to figure out how to develop the center of town for 20 years now. And obviously, we've done a crappy job. All you need to do is look at the thing. What we always fail to realize is the market is going to dictate what goes in the center of town. If a developer doesn't think he can sell a unit where the total thing is built with one and a half spots, he's not going to build it. He's not going to build something that he knows he's going to lose money. We always think we can supplant our judgment for the developers. And that's in my mind why the town center still sits vacant. We don't, everything we've heard, this whole body of changes that are being proposed, starting with the last one that got turned down and the next couple, all revolves around trying to make the center more developable. It's all built around this idea of proximity to a train station, getting people out of cars, getting people here who might commute, who might take the train, who might walk. And we don't want to permeate the center of town with blacktop. Let this go through with one and a half. If the developers don't think any of these units are going to sell, they're not going to build the buildings. They're not going to build them to lose money. So, don't always try and supplant what you think is the best idea with a developer. If these things still don't sell, if they don't ever get developed, we're going to be back here revising this bylaw from one and a half to two because the one and a half didn't work. It's not going to work that we're going to have empty developments. It's going to not work by knowing that we still have empty lots. And if we need to change it then, we need to change it then. But don't try and at this point supplant your judgment for what we think makes sense and let the developers go to work.
At the question microphone.
Arthur Franzak, 14 Main Street. I'd like somebody to perhaps clarify, if you don't have enough, what's the downside? I mean, are folks concerned that people are going to park in their driveway? Is it that there'll be too much competition for public parking? And I just reiterate what folks have said earlier. I'm not clear as to how more parking downtown is a positive thing. So, if somebody, if someone can just speak to the position of we need more parking lots because we need to have enough, I just want to know what the downside is of not having that. Thank you.
Is anyone prepared from planning to speak? Mr. Talerman?
I think maybe in addition to my own comment, I can answer what Mr. Franzak was asking. Well, if you don't have enough parking, you're in trouble because Chief Stone won't be happy. That being said, I think the reason, I think, let's not misunderstand. Even though less impervious surface is always a good thing for the environment, the reason why less parking is attractive is it means more building. So, less pavement means more place where you can put your building. That's why developers want less parking. A developer would take zero parking. So, I disagree a little bit with what Mr. Waldman said. If we had a zero parking requirement, they'd be thrilled because they build it and let someone else figure it out later. But I think one thing that we have to keep in mind and the reason why I still support this even though I have some concerns is that we're setting up in this mixed-unit, mixed-use town center, shared parking where the natural course of things is that in the evening, when residents are going to be parking, people who have the nearby businesses won't be parking. So, the one and a half is actually a slightly bigger number because of the natural flow of what parking is and what it isn't. For the daytime uses that we have required parking for as well, those spaces will be empty. So, we can manage with one and a half probably a little bit easier. If this was purely residential context, I think one and a half would be squeezing a little bit tightly. But with shared parking, I think we should be okay if, you know, traditional numbers hold up.
At the no microphone.
Christina Gleason, 249 Main Street. I think some people are making the assumption that we want, everybody in town wants the center of town to be more built up with more businesses and more people living there. And that is not necessarily the case.
Thank you. At the yes microphone.
David Rosenberg, North Street. I support this, but I want to disagree with one of the statements made by one of the other supporters. That statement was that we should not try to second-guess what the builders want to do. We should let them use their business judgment and build things and they'll only build things that sell. I think that that statement is true, that they'll only build things that they think will sell. But that assumes that there's an alignment between the builders' interests and the citizens' interests. And I don't think that alignment necessarily exists. I think that the builders are inclined to do what's profitable for them, but it may be profitable for them and harmful for the town. And therefore, we have to separate the builders' interests with the citizens' interest. Nonetheless, I still support this.
Okay. Anyone else at a yes, no, or question microphone? Seeing no one, this is a two-thirds majority, so vote counters, get ready. All of those in favor of approval of Article 13 as amended to reflect the change from one car per unit to 1.5 cars per unit, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Article 14.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant. Currently, the zoning bylaws allow only street parking for businesses that are abutting that piece of property or at least 66% of it abuts it. What this article does is allows parking within 450 feet of that business. It would not allow 450 feet if it was across the tracks, but it would allow 450 feet that you could walk to. And that would again encourage businesses to be able to have a business that they know that they've got parking nearby that they can use.
Planning board?
The planning board supports this article as written in the warrant.
Anyone with any questions or comments relative to Article 14 as written in the warrant? Seeing no one approach a microphone, all of those in favor of approval of Article 14 as written in the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, two-thirds majority was required. Article 15.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, sorry. This, all this does is amend the previous article from 450 feet to 500 feet.
Planning board?
Jeff Palumbo, Planning Board Chairman. Planning Board supports approval of this article as written in the warrant.
Any questions or comments relative to Article 15? At the question mic.
David Rosenberg, North Street. I'm interested in understanding why the articles were done this way. That is why there was first one article for 450 and then that article was immediately followed by another article to change the number to 500.
Someone from the planning board? Someone from the advisory board? Anybody? Euler?
I'm stepping up to the mic to tell you that the planning board, in this particular case, that really wasn't determined by the planning board. You know, we discussed each of these at length and I think it's probably more the advisory committee perhaps in terms of ordering the articles. I don't think that's anything deliberate by the planning board.
And here comes the advisory board to defend their position.
I believe it was the, the original article was 450 feet and that's, so we stuck with that. And then to make it 500 feet, we added the second part of the article. So, we, the first article was, Article 14 was originally 450 feet. We just included that and then changed it in the next article to 500 feet, added the 50 feet.
Any other questions or comments relative to what appears to be a housekeeping article?
Jack Ruckew, Norfolk Street. Why? Why was, what's the 50 feet? What was the reasoning behind that?
Okay, you've got to get back up there.
Again, it was brought to us by the planning board. So, we, again, this is an original 450 feet and then the second article was brought to us and it was the 500 feet. So, we voted on what we were getting brought.
I think the simple answer to the question is the additional 50 feet allows for additional parking to support the development. So, that's the purpose of the 500 versus 450. Now, it also coincides with the maximum distance which we allow for cul-de-sac. So, there's some other reasoning that was certainly referenced during our public hearing process.
Seeing no one else at a microphone relative to Article 15, all of those in favor of approval of Article 15 as written in the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Believe it is unanimous. The ayes carry. Before we get... I have, here's Article 16 and then here is their motion.
Somebody's going to tell me I fall behind.
Mr. Franzak.
Mister Moderator, I move to amend the Norfolk zoning map by adding the following parcel to the B1 outside the Business Corps district, map 14, block 49, lot 11, as shown on the zoning map. And to revise Section B definitions of the zoning bylaws with respect to the term "Business Corps" so that it reads as follows. Business Corps, a portion of the B1 district which is west of Carlson Circle as shown on the zoning map. And to revise Section 1.3 district boundaries of the zoning bylaws so that it reads as follows. The B1 district is further divided into two areas as designated on the zoning map. One, the Business Corps, and two, outside the Business Corps.
A second? And just for clarification purposes, there's some additional language from what exists in your warrant and in the handout with the advisory committee recommendations. I've taken a look at it. It appears that it's just helpful clarification of what the new Business Corps will look like. I don't think it's expanding anything and it appears to me that it is within the scope of the original article. So, Mr. Franzak, you have any explanation?
We discussed this at length with folks from the planning board. My understanding is there is one lot which would in fact be added to this section because overall the language is clarifying. The one lot which is added, there was a lot of discussion about how this would incrementally expand that section of town at the center. Concerns were raised about expanding it when there are other opportunities which have not yet been fully developed. However, the majority of the advisory group was persuaded that this particular lot in question, it's really surrounded by all other B1 lots. It's right on the commuter rail line. And there was a lot of discussion about the sort of transit-oriented development idea that this lot is really ideally suited to the intentions that were discussed, putting up housing and such for people. So, overall, we voted in favor of it because we felt that had greater benefit to the town. Thank you.
Mr. Palumbo, Planning Board?
Thank you, Mister Moderator. Rezoning of this property is a logical extension of the B1 district. It is well-suited to higher-density residential development because it is within convenient walking distance of the commuter rail and retail shops in the town center. The proposal to allow multifamily, excuse me, multifamily development within the existing developed town center in a location that is transit-oriented, which basically means near the commuter rail station, is the embodiment of smart growth. The proposal is consistent with the following master plan goals advanced by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for smart growth development. Number one, direct new development to the existing core areas to the greatest extent possible. Number two, revitalize downtown areas with flexible zoning provision that focus on transit-oriented design. And number three, reduce energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions. It is also consistent with efforts to promote the economic viability of retail in the town center by creating additional residential units with convenient access to these retail shops.
Comments, questions? At the no mic.
Chris Henry, 30 Boardman Street. I have a question about why we're expanding the B1 district when we have at least 50% vacancy presently. Number two, no one as of yet that I'm aware of has presented a proposal and yet we are going to change the zoning which is forever. When in fact, we change the zoning and the ownership of that parcel could change and therefore, the intent of what they were going to do with the property can change and the zoning stays. It's unclear the impact that this development is going to have on schools, town services, as well as traffic. I think that the assertion that these people who live in these apartments don't drive cars is ludicrous. The access would be out onto 115, right by the train tracks. I don't know anybody who's gone across there when the bridge is down. It backs up considerably now. I don't know how all of these people leaving out of there would make that better. Number four, it's located within a predominantly residential neighborhood. I do realize that it abuts the Business District against the railroad tracks there. But almost everything else that it abuts in there are residential. Rezoning to a B1 will not prevent this from being a tract of 40B. I don't believe that that would change it one way or another. If the project stands on its own merits, that's great. But to try and change the zoning to suit one lot doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
At the question mic.
Kevin Gleason, 249 Main Street. This is all very nice. It's an extension of what we have over there. But could somebody log into by any chance Google World and let's see what this thing, this area really looks like? I have no idea where that is.
Mister Hathaway, you have the ability to get to that other map perhaps? There's a couple of different slides that I think might be helpful. I think the colored portion there, if you, you can see where Hillcrest Village is there? I think Mister Hathaway could probably use the cursor and give you a little bit of a tour here.
Do we have access to Google World? Maybe zoom down and see exactly where we're talking about. Like I say, this is just an allotment of something I can't make out to begin with.
Mister Hathaway's going to give it his best shot. I don't think we have anything in terms of satellite imagery.
Nice picture of a drain, whatever it is, but I have no idea what that really is that we're talking about here.
Okay, well, here's Rockwood Road, all right? Here's the MBTA, the trains going by.
Okay.
Here's Main Street. So, you're going to have the roundabouts over here, right? Here's Independence. So, you have the library right here. Now, this is all the Main Street stores going all the way up and you're going over the bridge over the tracks. You're going to go towards the post office and down towards Boardman over here. Sorry, yeah, I always mess that up. Boardman. So, this is the property we're talking about. You can enter it from, there's a number 25, kind of a very nice sign here. You can enter the property. And there's approximately seven acres of land that's in behind is Frank Gross's building here, if you remember that one. And there's going to, it's in the B1 district. We put that in the B1 district a couple of years ago, but that's a residence. So, now they're trying to add this into the B1 district. As one gentleman said, this is all residential up here and then this is all the B1 down here. And it's a kid's place.
Oh, well, thank you.
At the yes microphone, Mister Waldman.
Mark Waldman Sagamore Road. Just a answer to the comments that were made before. This is currently a single-family house, we were told. By changing the zoning, this can forever remain a single-family house. We do not alter in any way. If the owner always wants to maintain a single-family home, it can stay that way. If the owner always wants to maintain a single-family home, it can stay that way. The item number 12 you see there with the G on it, that it abuts, is a single, beautiful single-family home with a beautiful front porch that everybody drives by and says, "What a lovely front porch." My comment being that changing the zoning doesn't automatically change what the structure is. It increases the possibilities of what it could become, but as long as who owns that house would want it to stay a single family, it could stay a single family. So by simply changing the zoning as we did on Frank Gross's property and the property next to it, does not automatically create a multi-family unit. It creates the possibilities of such. And you can see from the yellow that abuts most of it, and then the other big part, which is Hillcrest Village, this is not, I mean, it does abut two single-family homes, but that's it. It primarily abuts train tracks, B1 district zoning, and even though, I'm assuming Hillcrest is a single-family zone, but it's obviously not a single-family home. So it really is, in my mind, and I think of the majority of the advisory board, seemingly conducive property to the potential for multi-unit or multi-use development.
At the question mic.
Is there a second means of egress out of... Oh, Martha Henry, 30 Boardman Street. Is there a second means of egress that would be attached to that property if the current owner sold it and turned it into a multi-development, or a 40B goes in there? Because we can't stop it due to zoning.
I'll let someone else in.
And then I have...
Second question?
Forget it. I can come back, right?
We'll give you an extra trip back. I'll let someone else answer that, but I think the question is, I don't think so as it's currently configured on that parcel. I want to go to Ms. Whitney here first.
Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street in Ponville. Relative to the comment about this doesn't change the residential status of an existing structure, if I had lived in Ponville when the C1 district was created, I would have voted against it. I would have fought it. I live in a house that is over 255 years old. Yes, we are a residence, and the status of residents, it worries me every day that it will change, that it will be swallowed up by commercial. And I strongly recommend not changing residential to business.
And Mr. Plumbo or Mr. Hathaway, and if, I was saving the question, if you can help answer that first question too, if you know the answer to it.
Okay, relative to that question, during our conversations, during public hearing and otherwise, comments concerning egress dealt with secondary egress in terms of emergency egress, so there may very likely need to be some provision of that nature, but it would be something that would be controlled as opposed to something that would be just universally used.
And did you have a follow-up? Or you're good for now? Let's go, unless you have something to add to that, Jack?
Do not, I was going to...
Okay, let's go back to the no-mic over here.
Jeff Moore, I'm at Levin Medway Branch. I'm actually supportive of expanding businesses in town center, but not for just the sake of doing it. We've got plenty of vacant lots in town center, and I just don't see any reason to expand it to where, have better occupancy rates in town. I think it's a waste of time.
Mr. Hathaway.
I'd just like to speak in favor of this article. You know, we have a property owner who is interested in looking at alternative uses for his property. We certainly all know that the challenges we've had in the center of town, we've talked about it many times tonight. It's a chicken and egg thing, whether or not we have residences come before the commercial or commercial come before the residences. I think in this case, we've got a person who's interested in doing some development. I'd like to get some density in the center of town and hopefully see if we can get some commercial to follow.
Ms. Terrio.
Thank you, Joyce Terrio, 57 Rockwood. The concern I have, and call me stupid, but the town property off to the left-hand side there, that's Kid's Place. Well, Kid's Place isn't going to be there any longer, and as far as I know, the town has absolutely no plans for the property. So by all rights, if that is sold, the town could consider to use Kid's Place, the egress onto Boardman Street as an egress into this property. And that's, that should be a huge concern for everyone who's in this neighborhood.
Cindy Andrade, Worcester Road. I just was wondering how large the property is.
Anyone, Mr. Plumbo, you have an answer to that question?
I believe it's on the order of seven acres, I think. I would like to respond to a few other questions that I think have gone unanswered.
You may, I'm giving you some leeway here.
Okay, thank you. I think one of the first questions and comments was, you know, why would we want to do this when we have other parcels that are undeveloped? And I think the reality is that this particular parcel is attractive for development because of its proximity to rail and to the Commercial District, the B1 core district. So all of the outer B1 parcels are not equal in that regard. So this one could very likely see development sooner than other parcels within the outer B1. And this parcel would render itself attractive as far as grant monies from the state for transit-oriented development. So that's very likely, something that we could pursue, and I know there has been discussion relative to so-called 40R developments. So I think this parcel, more than any other, it's very real that there could be development. We don't have a definitive plan or anything of that nature in front of the Planning Board, but I think that that should be considered. And also the fact that because of its proximity to rail in terms of what we would view as conventional development in terms of a colonial or something of that nature, it's really not that conducive to that type of development. It really does fit the profile of higher-density type development.
And back to the no-mic.
Martha Henry, 30 Boardman Street. I just want to appreciate, thank you for saying that it's unlikely to stay a single-family home, as was mentioned by somebody on the Advisory Committee. I guess the question is, is we have a huge downtown that's vacant, and we're now trying to expand it instead of trying to attract developers to other parts that are not surrounded by single-family homes. So I just wanted to say that it seems like somebody mentioned that it's about one person who wants to sell their property to make more money because it's not making enough money as a single-family property, which it was zoned as, and we shouldn't be changing zoning for one property owner.
And making a rare appearance at a microphone, Mr. Dooley.
Sean Dooley, 76 Cleveland Street. I just had a question for both Planning Board and for the Selectmen. I guess the first and foremost would be the town property at Kid's Place, if this were to be moved into the B1 district. I would assume that moving any property, you know, any town property being, whether it's an access road or utilized by that property or anything, that would have to go through town meeting to be sold or distributed or allowed to be used for emergency access. And then the other question was for planning. If, what I know about zoning is correct, if this isn't done, this person can develop this as, you know, given our density requirements, as a 40B, and it could be, basically skip over all of the town's philosophies and, you know, Planning Board and everything like that, and basically kind of do a hostile takeover and it be a 40B situation where we could get a lot more units in, much more dense, without the oversight and everything like that on the town. So one question for the Selectmen and one question for the Planning Board. Thank you.
And if I may, on your very first question, if there is a sale, I'll answer that one for you. That would require a town meeting vote, but I would like someone from this table over here to maybe answer if there is any use restrictions on the property that would have to go the town meeting route as well. Mr. Lehan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The facts on Kid's Place, I don't know how Kid's Place was acquired. If Kid's Place was acquired for the purposes of parks or recreation of that nature, we could, it could not be used for any other purpose. It would be in violation of the state constitution, and it would require a two-thirds vote of the state to remove it from that purpose. So that's something we'd have to find out. I don't know how that land was acquired, but if it in fact was acquired for that purpose, then it remains restricted for that purpose and could not be sold for another purpose. If the town were to sell that property, the process is such that it would have to go through the public bidding process, and it would require a town meeting approval for that property to be sold.
Thank you, Mr. Lehan. And earning his money tonight, Mr. Plumbo, can you answer the other question?
Jeff Plumbo, Chairman of the Planning Board. Yeah, the, Mr. Dooley is correct that the town, because of its affordable, affordable housing proportion, which presently is on order of about 3.6%, I believe is the number. But based on that and because it does fall below the state guidelines, that developer could very well develop that property under 40B, which would mean that some of the things that we do as a Planning Board in terms of the controls that we have, for example, planned multi-lot development, a PMLD, the Planning Board has pretty significant authority in terms of what the Planning Board feels is acceptable and unacceptable for that type of development. So we would basically lose that authority if someone were to develop that as a 40B, and unless it was a public safety issue of some kind, the town would have very little to say about it.
I believe, Mr. Kaliza, what's next?
Mike Kaliza, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals and member of the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee. Couple of comments regarding this parcel of land. The parcel of land is ideal for housing. It is not ideal for retail. It's landlocked. You're not going to find any developer in their right mind trying to put stores in there. It's an ideal location for housing. The Economic Development Committee is actively going out to landowners in town, asking them, what can we do to help you develop your property? I don't know about anybody else in this room, but I'm getting pretty darn sick and tired of watching my taxes go up every year, and I'd like to see the town center developed. And I think it's very important to have housing there. We have a landowner who wants to put a nice project in there, have complete oversight by all the land use boards, the ZBA, the Planning Board, the Board of Health. Everyone gets input into that type of a project. What scares the heck out of me is if we don't encourage this landowner to develop this land, we're going to have an unfriendly 40B come in, and we're going to be stuck with 50, 60, 70, 80 apartments, which none of us in this room wants, and none of us has any control over. The only board that would have any oversight over an unfriendly 40B would be my board, the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have one hand tied behind our back. We have very little say into what goes in there. So for my money, it makes sense to encourage the current landowner to develop this in a nice way where the town has a lot of input, where all the land use boards have a lot of input, and I recommend that you strongly support this article. Thank you.
And at the question mic.
Is there a paper road on the town's property that comes from Boardman through there?
And I think you're referring to what you can see on the ground there?
No, there, well, that's the railroad property on the opposite side. I believe the town has a paper road there that would provide access to that, and would that be used or would that be part of that same, that they'd have to go to town meeting in order to do that?
I believe it's on the same parcel, but Mr. Lehan is eager to answer.
There is no access to Boardman Street from that piece of property, just matter of fact. There is this mythical paper road, which is a trail, for all intents and purposes, that goes along Kid's Place, walks in through the back and comes up into Main Street. It is not a road. It's a trail. And is not a road under any conditions, there's nothing there. There is no access to Boardman Street.
And can't be used for access to this property?
No, it cannot.
It can be used for access.
It cannot.
Oh, it cannot be used for access. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Frantak, are you waiting around to say something there or just stretching out?
Waiting for the next article.
Mr. Axper.
Just question, Article 10, was that approved tonight?
Article 10, I do not believe was approved.
All right, just question. If Article 10 was approved, and this is a seven-acre parcel, that would mean that that would have been 140-unit parcel possibly. It is now a 70-unit parcel, correct?
It is. I believe if that bylaw applies, that with the failure of Article 10, it would be a maximum of, if it remained one lot, it would be a maximum of 16 two-bedroom units. But I'm not sure, there's other bylaws and means of developing it too. I don't want to speak for someone, maybe Mr. Lehan can help you out.
We get confused by the numbers, but the reality is that if it is not a 40B, which means it doesn't circumvent our zoning, the zoning restricts a lot of the considerations associated with building. So we don't want to confuse the number versus the density consideration. That's an oddly configured lot, as you can see. I mean, it's not sort of a clean square. And so the number of units under our zoning that could go in there probably would not be the same as what you see in terms of the maximum in terms of density, because we have, there are buffer zones, there are all kinds of things that can into play that restrict the amount of buildings that can be there. Now, if you do a 40B, a lot of that goes out the window.
I do know that. My question is, was Article 10 put in place to benefit this parcel alone?
I don't, I don't know. I don't think so.
I don't know if anyone wants to speak to the intention of that. I'm aware of, just personally, of several different potential development scenarios in our whole Business Court, and I think that that article could have benefited any number of them. So at the question mic.
Hi, Fred Hustler, 1 Cowusett Avenue. Quick question of, I have a couple of questions, so I'll save them in order and then I'll step away. First of all, why are you currently holding the mic and what's the reason for the recusal? Who brought this to the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee? My other question is, in the write-up from the Advisory Committee, it specifically states that it's within an existing B1 area and surrounded by several B1 lots. Lots on one side, doesn't seem to be surrounding, to me, so if the Advisory Committee could discuss to that. And then also, there's a lot of discussion about commuter rail, and I'm pretty sure that the MBTA would not want people walking across the commuter rail tracks to get to our one-sided commuter rail station. So from my point of view, people would have to walk out to Rockwood and then walk down. So there's been a lot of discussion from people on the yes side, that it's commuter-friendly development, and I really don't see that. So if somebody could address that, I would appreciate it. Thank you. And I know that's a lot. If you want me to come back and repeat something, I'd be happy to.
Some of those were more comments than questions. The first question is, I'm the deputy moderator, and I never question the moderator as to why she may step down for something. That's a process. As to the second question, if anyone cares to answer how it came to the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee, they can. I feel that's a little outside the scope of the debate we're having here, so I don't think it's particularly germane, but if someone wanted to volunteer that, that's fine with me. As to the other things, I think those were more comments than questions, but if anyone wanted to fill in the town meeting on any of it or respond to it, they're free to do so. So seeing nobody, and, oh. Take your time, take your time.
Well, sorry, I wanted to speed this along because I'm asking a lot of questions. Fred Hustler, 1 Cowusett Avenue. So the people that first spoke to this definitely said that it was surrounded. It's written in here. And then they also talked about how it has egress to the MBTA, and I would like somebody to discuss that, so.
If anyone can answer if it has egress to the MBTA other than the parking lot on, I mean, the sidewalk on Rockwood Road, feel free to. I'm not aware of any crossing the tracks there. Mr. Plumbo, again.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just speak to my personal comments. I don't believe at any point that I said there was egress to the MBTA. I think there's proximity, but in terms of direct egress, that's a different story.
I think it's a valid question, though, so thank you for the clarification.
And one other point, in terms of Article 10, which was defeated this evening, at no time during public hearings and discussions that I've been privy to, were those comments related to this parcel. Now, this parcel would fall in the outer B1, so had that article been approved, yes, it would be one of a handful of parcels which would have been affected by Article 10, but it's not a, there's no direct relationship.
Thank you, Mr. Plumbo. Mr. Frantak, I think.
Yeah, Arthur Frantak, Martin Main Street. I think the question was the use of the term surrounded. I can speak to myself. When I look at the map, it looks to me like there's yellow to the left, to the bottom, and half of to the right. So I would consider that to be surrounded. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sneed.
Just a response to a comment, not really a question, but the description in the write-up of this says that the property directly abuts the commuter rail tracks, and I believe that is factually correct. that is factually correct.
I believe it is factually correct as well, but having access across the tracks, I think, is a different issue. But, right. Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Garrity, Boardman Street. It seems to me that it would be infinitely wiser to be offensive in our zoning rather than defensive in our zoning. Rather than come back in the spring when there is a proposal afoot to do some hideous 40B or other residential that we would hate, it would be much better to put this into the outside business core, which is the zoning which allows for just residential. It doesn't, there's no nasty commercial there. The density is much lower. The lot has certain constraints that without 40B, if it was still in our ordinary zoning, we have a lot more control over it. And it would not be a 40-unit, 50-unit development. Just the fact that it, right now, has one egress point. And I think everyone's spoken to the fact that it doesn't have a second. There's no plans for it to have a second. It would seem to me better to do this now, do it right, rather than face at the point of a gun later on trying to fix something, working from behind.
So that we don't end on a comment with our selectmen calling our zoning offensive? Question, Mike.
I appreciate that. Martha Henry, 30 Boardman Street. Does rezoning it to a B1 prevent it from becoming a 40B?
No.
Okay. Because it seems like 40B scare tactics. I feel like we're back at the election. You know, let's be honest about that you could still have a 40B even though it's a B1, right? Everybody saying yes to that? Thank you.
Hi, Sue Jacobson, Village Green. There is, the difference between a 40B is a friendly 40B or an unfriendly 40B. And that's basically what we're talking about.
Let me explain a little bit, seeing I do a little bit of 40B work every day of my life for cities and towns. They can be friendly. They cannot be friendly. Friendly would mean generally that someone comes and works on a project with us together. It happens. And they can be unfriendly where someone comes in and does something we don't like. We've seen that. And it wasn't pleasant. Mr. Kaliza was on the board, I think, the last time we spent years and are still spending time working on a difficult 40B process. That is not a value judgment on what could happen here, but they come in both stripes. More frequently, the unfavorable stripe. Anyone else at any of the microphones? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the rezoning of this parcel, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
It's close enough that I'd like to see a count. Mr. Merliss, Mr. Terrio. All those in favor, please signify by raising your green card.
I don't know why I was doing that.
Hold them up.
You nipped me past it.
And all those opposed, please signify by raising your green card.
17.
17. We have 49 in favor and 30 not in favor. The article does not pass.
Mr. Moderator.
Next article. If we, if, we can pause just a moment so the moderator can take her rightful place. Thank you.
I enjoyed my banana. Thank you.
Sounds nice.
I did enjoy it.
Yeah.
No, I hated it. I like wolfed it down. Got my water. I'll wait till people are debating on Article 17 before I drink.
Drink some for everybody?
No. Didn't. I have some candy under here, though. Article 17.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant. Okay, so this article pertains to specific rules that apply to excavation, how dirt is excavated and moved on properties during construction. The bottom line here is, the rules as they exist today force things to be trucked off the site, only to then come back on later. There's other specific kind of unusual side effects of this. The net result is extra expense, delays, and some odd-looking storage, temporary storage, which occurs. The intention was to make this change such that it was easier for developers to get the job done. Thank you.
Planning Board?
Planning Board recommends that Article 17 be approved as written in the warrant. Because this is a planning board article, I'll add a few comments. Presently, developers excavating lots under adjacent parcels of land under development are restricted from stockpiling earthen materials on adjacent lots to those where the earthen material was removed. Approval of Article 17 will allow developers to more effectively manage the movement of earth, and in certain cases, avoid the unnecessary activity of trucking material off-site, only to be brought back at a later time.
Anyone with a question or comment relative to Article 17 as printed in the warrant?
David Axberg, 106. Question is, trucking sometimes means off-of-town jurisdictions? Is that still not acceptable in developing? I was under the impression that developers couldn't truck loam outside of the town of Norfolk. It needed to stay in the town of Norfolk. Am I correct in that or not?
Mr. Palumbo, can you answer the trucking question?
I am not aware of that. I think the, we'll get back to the reason why we have these earth removal permits. And one of the major reasons is to keep the activity to a minimum on our roads because it can be a safety issue. And we do the best we can to manage the time at which this activity is taking place to avoid periods when school buses are on the roads and such. So this article, the intent is to actually reduce some of that activity, which is unnecessary in that we have earthen material being taken off-site and being brought back, which is certainly unnecessary and quite silly.
Anyone else with a question or comment relative to Article 17? Seeing no one at the microphone, fun fact, even though this is a planning board who's speaking, simple majority will carry it. All of those in favor of approval of Article 17 as written in the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. The majority carried. Article 18.
Madam Moderator, I move that we approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant. Okay, Article 18 addresses cases of planned multi-lot developments. This article would grant the planning board greater latitude and discretion to make zoning exceptions in the cases of these projects, which by their nature, sometimes have like unusual circumstances. A lot of judgment applies. Both the zoning board and the planning experts both agreed that this was a better alignment of this authority. People could still appeal to, I should say, developers could still appeal to the zoning board as sort of a place of last resort. But at its heart, the zoning process is much more of a, almost like a legal appellate, rather of a slow process. And the net gain to the town would be more flexibility and more attractive development. Thank you.
Planning Board?
Planning Board recommends that Article 18 be approved as written in the warrant. Article 18 will provide the planning board with the authority to grant exceptions to dimensional requirements included in the town zoning, under the condition that the project be presented as part of a PMLD, that the plan is sufficiently comprehensive and consistent with the master plan, and that there exists a greater quantifiable benefit to the town by granting the exception or waiver. This authority would render a zoning variance unnecessary in these defined situations, thus saving the developer time, money, and increasing the likelihood that such development will occur.
Anyone with a question or comment relative to Article 18? I don't know if this person's leaving or if he's approaching the microphone. And I'm sorry to make a, okay. I didn't want to call it if you were headed on, ambling on up. Seeing nobody at the microphones, all of those in favor of approval of Article 18 as written in the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Two-thirds majority was required. Article 19.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 19 as printed in the warrant. This article makes a very specific dimensional change. I don't know if we, yeah, we do have it up there. As you see, line C currently has an 8,000-square-foot requirement, dimensional requirement. This cuts that in half to 4,000 square feet.
Planning Board? You're almost done, Jeff. Just a couple more.
Jeff Palumbo, Chairman of your planning board. The Planning Board recommends that Article 18, Article 19, be amended as follows. Madam Moderator, I'll proceed with the motion for amendment.
Yep. So now there's a motion for amendment before the floor. What are you looking to amend?
I think it's, I think we have it to display as well. There, there it is. Okay. I move that Article 19 be amended by removing the strike-through of 8,000 so that the number 8,000 remains as a general minimum lot size for planned multi-lot development, and adding the phrase, quote, "or 4,000 square feet for one dwelling unit," quote, after the words "8,000 square feet." The effect of this amendment will be to retain 8,000 square feet as the minimum lot size in a PMLD generally, but to allow a 4,000-square-foot lot only for the purpose of accommodating a single dwelling unit.
Any questions or comments relative to what is currently before the floor, which is a motion to amend to remove the strike-through of 8,000 and add subsequent language? Seeing no one, a majority is required. All of those in favor of amending Article 19, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The article is amended. So now, folks, you're considering Article 19 as it appears on the board, not as it appears in your warrant. Planning Board?
Currently in the B1 district, mixed-use development is allowed within planned multi-lot developments containing at least 80,000 square feet of land overall. PMLDs are formerly associated groups of lots with shared infrastructure elements, having minimum lot sizes of 4,000 square feet in the business core and 8,000 square feet outside the business core. Having individual lots within PMLDs can help with condominium financing because banks now require 70% of the condominium units to be sold prior to committing to construction loans. The current 8,000-square-foot minimum lot size for lots outside the business core restricts flexibility in subdividing PMLDs. Article 19 would amend Section I-4B-3 and set the minimum required size for lots within a planned multi-lot development at 4,000 square feet, both inside the business core and outside the business core. The minimum parcel size for the overall PMLD would remain at 80,000 square feet. Now getting to the reasoning behind the amendment, while the purpose of the original Article 19 is to allow developers to create small individual lots due to financing restrictions for condominium developments, for example, requiring a minimum number of units to be sold before financing can be obtained, the purpose of the amendment is to limit the density that can be achieved using the smaller lot sizes.
Anyone with any questions or comments relative to Article 19 as amended? At the question microphone, sir.
I am. David Axberg, 106 Econ Street. Doing this lot size change, is this not correspondence to the same Amendment Number 10 where we were changing lot sizes to do that?
From Planning Board?
Yeah, Jeff Palumbo, Chairman of the Planning Board. Yeah, this gets back to a point I made earlier about the different units of measure. And it can be quite confusing to put it all together. But Article 10, if you recall, Article 10 dealt with bedrooms, the number of bedrooms. Now, we amended it to add some reference to how many, let's see, how many bedrooms, actually, units per acre. We amended it to add how many units per acre. So you can see I'm confusing myself. But, so it's different. So the purpose, the intent of this is quite different.
Uh, no, no. Oh, yeah, you get two. Everybody gets two, just a gentle reminder.
This still then, if you go by square footage, you're doubling the amount of units per lot if you realistically go down that road. How?
Okay, first of all, no, this isn't the Springer Show, so nobody needs to jump in from the audience. He's asked a question. Mr. Palumbo, are you prepared to answer it?
And unfortunately, it comes back to the, kind of the same explanation that I tried to make just moments ago, that if you look at Article 10, you're talking about lots and you have lots of different sizes potentially. So here, this is a bit different and it's a bit more definitive in terms of square footage versus Article 10, which was dealing with bedrooms and lots.
Uh, no, 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 no. Two times at the microphone. Thank you. Next time, just bundle them all together and we'll have him answer them all at once. Anybody else with a question or a comment relative to Article 19 as amended? Seeing no one at a microphone, all of those in favor of approval of Article 19 as amended, as it appears up here, not in your warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. A two-thirds majority was required. Article 20.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant. At last Spring Town Meeting, the rezoning of the Flood Plains District was approved. This article is asking for approval to make those changes to the Norfolk zoning map.
From Planning Board?
Jeff Palumbo, Chairman of the Planning Board. Planning Board recommends that Article 20 be approved as written in the warrant. A town meeting held last spring, changes in the floodplain elevations were adopted to reflect recent survey data and correct a number of inconsistencies in floodplain delineation within the town. Article 20 simply allows the town zoning map to be brought into alignment with revisions made to the floodplain at that time.
Anyone with any questions or comments relative to Article 20? Seeing no one at a microphone, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Two-thirds majority was required. Article 21.
Can I go here?
Yes.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 21 as printed in the warrant. This article is to allow veterans to volunteer to provide services to the town in exchange for property tax obligations up to $1,000, similar to a provision that's currently allowed for senior citizens in the town.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments relative to Article 21 as it's written in the warrant? Seeing nobody approaching a microphone, all of those in favor of Article 21 as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Simple majority was all that was required. The ayes have it. Article 22.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
I think I exceeded 125 hours.
This is fun today.
Yep. I'm sorry. The article is in reference to the crypt, which resides within the historic Pondville Cemetery and is in dianita repair and updating. The proposed funding will not only improve it aesthetically, but it'll also improve the safety to the surrounding area for both the workers and visitors.
Anyone with any questions or comments relative to Article 19? Anyone with any questions or comments relative to Article number 22? Seeing none, all of those in favor of Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, a majority was required. Article 23.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 23 as printed in the warrant. The repairs on the community, I'm sorry, on this tramp house are routine in nature and maintain the aesthetics of the building as well as necessary to avoid future expenses.
Anyone with any questions or comments relative to Article 23 as printed in the warrant? Seeing no one approaching a microphone, all of those in favor of Article 23 as a printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. 24. Looking now.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 24 as printed in the warrant. Approval of this article will allow the town to adopt a method of preserving and accessing the town's vital records and other historic records through a reliable storage medium and searchable database. Currently, those records are maintained only on paper, which puts them at risk for loss of, in a fire or having a hazard being water or anything else. This funding will allow the town to acquire equipment, software, training as needed to begin the process of digitally capturing those records. In addition to the benefit of safe and permanent storage of these records, the town clerk's office will be able to start a process for accessing that information more efficiently and with the possibility of moving forward into the digital age. As we heard in the presentations, these are, this is a process and a system being done by other surrounding towns.
At the question microphone?
David Rosenberg, North Street. I'd appreciate a little more detail about what the proposal is, and in particular, is it proposed to get this into a database on CDs or DVDs? Is it proposed to get it onto MicroFich? You know, where will the material be stored? I guess I would just appreciate a little deeper understanding of what would actually be done. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Sean Dooley, Town Clerk. It's a LaserFish program. Basically, it's a system where all the data records will be scanned and digitized. They will be kept inside on our computers as well as on an off-site hard disk at an adjoining town hall in their safe, just in case ours gets struck by a tornado or whatever. In addition, what it allows us to do is access all of our records from our office as opposed to going back and forth to the vault and things along those lines, so it expediates the process of obtaining historic records. Plus, all the things that are not, that are public in nature, you know, town meeting reports, selectmen meetings, things along those lines, will be in a searchable database, which we're not implementing that portion till the end of the product, project, once we get everything scanned in. And it's a searchable database with also, you can do overlays and, you know, make notes on the, on the actual database. So if one committee wanted to be presenting something, they can make overlay notes in the system, and then if, then you can forward it on, but it doesn't affect actually the records. Does that answer your question? All right, thank you.
Arthur Franzak, 14 Main Street. I just wanted to say, Al and I, both on the Advisory Commission, asked a lot of questions about the proposal. I was just very impressed with all the work that the town clerk had done, especially in collaborating with local towns. I strongly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Which mic are you going to? Question?
Question. Paul Cochran, Standish Road. Can the, can you tell me what this will add to the operating budget on an annual basis from supporting it with either people's time or software costs, upgrades, two, three years down the road, hardware costs? And also, has outsourcing this been explored, and what does the annual cost compare to a $40,000 outlay?
The, the cost, the annual cost for the initial software is $350 a year maintenance cost. There's additional software packages that we will hopefully be instituting in the future, but until we, you know, get everything up and running, we haven't even looked at those. Those would be basically from a searchable database, you know, ideally, we would like to be able to have the selectmen have it, and that's an additional $800 per year. The $40,000 cost includes, we went with a high estimate from the standpoint of, you know, this, once it's approved, then we can bring it out to the whole state bid product, project. This includes all the outsourcing of having all the labor done outside, you know, by an outside agency. It's basically about a penny a copy from a scanning standpoint, and it's much cheaper than for us trying to do it with either myself or my part-time assistant town clerk. So we just don't have the bandwidth within our office. One of the things that we have talked to them about is, in order to expedite things, we are going to be looking for volunteers and/or interns through some of the local universities to help keep the costs down. Did that answer your question, Paul? Thanks.
At the question microphone?
Yes, Jeff Burkner, 3 Wampanoag. Have we addressed the backing up of this data periodically in case of disasters, not just in one place, but like, you know, we all know hard drives fail and whatever technology we're using to preserve this. Have we considered what needs to be done to make sure we don't lose this information in the future? And also, what happens when this particular technology becomes obsolete? Are we going to be able to bring this database forward to some additional, some newer technology, or are we going to be starting from scratch?
Thank you.
I guess I can't necessarily answer what some future software would be, whether it's compatible or not, but I would, I would assume, I mean, you know, the company that we've been predominantly working with in most of the companies, most of the cities and towns around here, you know, Framingham, Born just had a big project, City of Boston is in the process of doing one, has all been with General Code, which is a company that's been around for about 80 years, you know, doing the microfilm and microfishing, moving forward. Some of the things that we're doing for backing up is, as part of this program, is that we're also going to have, one of the, a couple of the things that we're looking into in the finalizing of the project is to have an actual microfilm database done alongside of it, which will be housed in an outside, secure location, as well as the backup of all the, of all of our hard drives are going to be done and be kept separately off-site outside of the town hall. We work with other town halls, and, you know, we store things, each other in their, in our vaults. You know, for, the town of Rantham needs us to hold something for them, vice versa, just for as backup. Does that, does that answer your question? I'll stay down for Mr. Rosenberg.
Great. So this is a suggestion rather than a question. The suggestion is that the town clerk would be wise to consider having the data be in a standard, a format defined by publicly accessible standards rather than a proprietary format owned by a particular company. So for example, a PDF file rather than some, you know, buddy's secret thing, and also that another convenient form of backup might be copying it to CDs periodically rather than.
But it is non-proprietary.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else at a microphone relative to Article 24, all of those in favor of approval of Article 24, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes carry it, a majority was required. Article 25.
Madam Moderator, I move to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, Open Space Reserve, an amount not to exceed $20,000 to create an athletic field and park amenities strategic plan to assess the recreation needs of the town, identify potential field and other recreational opportunities to be acquired or created by the town, and preserve and manage the town's recreational assets. And I'd just like to point out that this, there is a slight difference in this from our prior recommendation in terms of the words that are highlighted and read there, recreational opportunities, as opposed to the prior wording of spaceland, I believe. So, just a small difference.
I'm taking the removal of spaceland as a friendly amendment. And I have on my notes that Ann Proto has three minutes of interesting information or more, but really three.
Fast, fast, I promise, it's late. Ann Proto, the Recreation Director. It's important that we do a comprehensive evaluation of our fields and recreation facilities for a few reasons. We've had, we have a lot of things going on, and they're, and it's going on concurrently. We've had an increase in users over the past, every year, we have an increase in users. For example, in 2008 in the spring, we had about 1,100 people using the fields. This spring, we were a little under 1,400. Additionally, we've lost field space with the building of this, this school. We're actually sitting on about three or four acres of what used to be field space, so we're down, down field space size. We've also had some infrastructure issues. We have some, a couple of old irrigation systems on, at this site that need to be evaluated. They also use town water. Like to look at using well water instead. We have some drainage issues on other fields. There are some fields that are fine, but with the overuse of the fields and the problems that we have, it's important to evaluate everything together. We also think it's very important to talk to the sports, to get the sports organizations together, which we do during a field allocation process, but we don't get them together to list their needs and, and then we also need, we'd like to do that, we also need to prioritize those needs. So the end result would be some short-term and long-term projects. Short-term projects would basically address safety issues, and the longer-term projects would look at space acquisition and possibly expansion. But I would like to talk about, instead of just saying, you know, we have more users and we have less field, so we need more space, I think it's very important that we look at the space that we have for optimal layout at this location. I think that we, we need to do an evaluation of the space we have. We have some issues, and there's safety issues. For example, where the softball field meets the football field, which is the top picture, which you can't see. The, there's, you have an infield for the softball, which is a sand mix, that butts right up against the football field, and it's one, it's not safe for football players and it's not safe for softball players. So that's the type of thing that we need to look at. We could possibly move the softball field, and then there's a possibility that we could gain additional soccer space because we moved the softball field. So instead of just going out and saying, okay, we need more land because we don't have as much land as we used to, it's, it's, we need to look at everything together and get everyone's input. Many towns do do this. Rantham has done, done a plan like this. Norwood's done a plan. Their, Wayland has done a plan, Sudbury's done a plan. There's several online on those towns' websites. If you have any questions?
Any questions or comments relative to Article 25? Seeing no one approaching a microphone, all of those in favor of approval of Article 25, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is not unanimous, however, a simple majority was all that was necessary. The ayes carry it. Article 26.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 26 as printed in the warrant. With adoption of the, these state law provisions to our town bylaws, the town will be allowed to revoke licenses, permits due to unpaid taxes or fees.
Are there any questions or comments relative to Article 26 as printed in the warrant? Seeing no one approaching a microphone, all of those in favor of Article 26, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is not unanimous, but a simple majority is all that's required. The ayes carry. Article 27.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 27 as printed in the warrant. On the recommendation of legal counsel, the town clerk fee schedule will be added to the town bylaws.
At the question microphone?
Are any of these fees changes from the fees that are in effect today, or is it just inclusion in the bylaw of today's fees?
These are the exact same fees that we already have in place, and so we, we just could not find one of the advantages of having a searchable database. We couldn't see where they were ever officially approved by the bylaws in the record, so we're doing it as a housekeeping measure.
Any other questions or comments relative to Article 27? Seeing no one racing towards a microphone, all of those in favor of Article 27 as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes carry it. It's unanimous. Do I have a motion? Oh, there's a motion to adjourn. Oh, there's a motion to dissolve the town meeting. That's even more exciting. We have a second to the motion to dissolve town meeting. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Too bad. See you guys in the spring. Thank you.